Okay. Good afternoon, everyone. We're live. Live. It's Monday afternoon from downtown Los Angeles. We welcome everyone to the special meeting for the fiscal year 2023-24 budget deliberations. Today is Monday, June 26, 2023, and we take note that a full complement of the board is present. Chief Executive Officer, the County Council, the Executive Officer, and the Sergeant at Arms are all here to assist. And we will begin, like we begin all of our board meetings, with the county's land acknowledgement. The County of Los Angeles recognizes that we occupy land originally and still inhabited and cared for by the Tongva, the Totavim, Surrano, Kish, and Chumash peoples. We honor and pay respect to their elders and descendants, past, present, and emerging, as they continue their stewardship of these lands and waters. We acknowledge that settler colonization resulted in land seizure, disease, subjugation, slavery, relocation, broken promises, genocide, and multi-generational trauma. This acknowledgement demonstrates our responsibility and commitment to truth, healing, and reconciliation, and to elevating the stories, culture, and community of the original inhabitants of Los Angeles County. We are grateful to have the opportunity to live and work on these ancestral lands. We are dedicated to growing and sustaining relationships with native peoples and local tribal governments, including, in no particular order, the Fernandino-Totavim Band of Mission Indians, the Gabrielino-Tongva Indians of California Tribal Council, the Gabrielino-Tongva San Gabriel Band of Mission Indians, the Gabrielino Band of Mission Indians, Kish Nation, the San Manuel Band of Mission Indians, the San Fernando Band of Mission Indians. Executive Officer, please play the code of conduct.
Ladies and gentlemen, may I please have your attention? The meeting of the Los Angeles County Board of Supervisors is about to commence. A code of conduct will now be read, and we request that you comply with it to ensure the efficient administration of the meeting. Members of the public, it is your right to participate in today's board hearing, and the board encourages such participation. However, the right of the public to address the board must be balanced with the need to ensure that public comment does not interfere with the orderly course of the board's business. All are reminded to abide by the following rules. Speakers must cease speaking immediately when their time has ended. Public comment on agenda items must relate to the subject matter of that item. General public comment is limited to subjects within the jurisdiction of the board. Public comment does not include the right to engage in a dialogue with board members or staff. Please remain respectful of the forum and refrain from uttering, writing, or displaying profane, personal, threatening, derogatory, demeaning, or other abusive statements toward the board, any member thereof, staff, or any other person. Members of the audience should be respectful of the views expressed by speakers, staff, and board members, and may not clap, cheer, whistle, or otherwise disrupt the orderly conduct of the meeting. Any person engaging in conduct that disrupts the meeting is subject to being removed from the board meeting. And finally, if you witness conduct or behavior by other members of the public that disrupts your ability to remain engaged or participate in this meeting, please notify the Sergeant at Arms or other county staff. Thank you for your cooperation.
Okay, thank you, and appreciate it again, just to remind our audience, we're glad you're here. But we usually like to refrain, especially when it gets to the public comment time, from clapping or booing from the audience. So if you agree with something that is said today, let us know this way. If you disagree, let us know that way, and that way we can keep this meeting moving smoothly. So we will now hear from our Chief Executive Officer, Fuzia Davenport, for your presentation.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and good afternoon, Supervisors. Today marks the deliberation phase of the county's annual budget process. This represents your board's opportunity to consider what are called, quote, "final changes," unquote, to the recommended budget approved actually in April. But before I share a brief slide presentation, I would like to start off by showing a very short animated video. This video is the latest in our series of explainer videos that aim to make our budget process more accessible to the public. This video focuses on one of the enduring questions of our budget terminology, which is, why do we describe this phase as "final changes" when the actual conclusion of our budget process comes months later in October? Our voiceover artist, Ms. Angela Singer, will explain. Can we please cue the video?
Usually, when somebody says "final," it means the end. So when we use the term "final changes" to describe a phase in LA County's budget process, that means we've reached the end of the road, right? Actually, no. In the world of county budget terms, "final changes" is short for "final changes to the recommended budget." Final changes comes after the recommended budget, which is the first phase of the annual budget process, and goes before the Board of Supervisors every April. Since the recommended budget is a preliminary spending plan, the board goes back in June to make final changes to the budget they approved in April to incorporate any adjustments in revenue or emerging needs. That's why this midpoint action is called "final changes." But wait, there's more. A third and concluding major budget phase comes in October, when the board considers the supplemental budget. The supplemental budget, like "final changes," gives the board the opportunity to fine-tune the budget they approved in earlier phases to reflect the most up-to-date information available on revenue and service needs. This really is the conclusion of the annual budget process, resulting in the county's final adopted budget for the fiscal year, until the whole process starts again in April. For more information on the county budget, go to ceo.lacounty.gov/budget.
Thank you. So that is a very short explanation of why we are here today. You can find that video, as indicated, on the CEO Budget page, along with other animations in our Budget 101 series. I see we have the slide presentation on the screen. Can we move to Slide 2, please? So what's changing in this budget phase? In this budget phase, we are recommending an increase of $367 million in new funding, bringing the overall budget to $43.4 billion for this budget phase. The vast majority of this new funding comes from the state with a smaller amount from the federal government, and these funds are being used either as intended or required to support specific programs and services. We're also expanding our county workforce. As you can see, we are adding 552 new positions, which I'll describe and talk about a little more in more detail later in the presentation. That bring in our total county workforce up to 114,658 positions. Despite these welcome additions, we are being forced to confront our budgetary limitations this fiscal year. As an example, we had to defer $659 million in departmental unmet needs requests to the supplemental budget phase, and we had to turn away requests totaling about $1.1 billion. I'll take the next slide, please. New programs. So to carry on with our theme of budgetary limitations, I'd like to point out that there has been no new growth in locally generated revenues, which has sharply limited our abilities to fund new programming. Property taxes remain in line with our original forecasts, although we are bracing for slower growth in fiscal year '24-'25, and I'd like to underscore that point. Each year doing recommended budget, we forecast what our local revenues will be. That includes property taxes, sales taxes, and the like. On the issue of property taxes, it is the assessor who actually comes in and gives the official forecast. Sometimes, our forecast is lower than what the assessor forecasts, which means that there is additional funding than we, more funding than we had anticipated, available for programs. For this budget phase, our forecast for the recommended budget in April and the assessor's forecast are in alignment. That means that there is not additional funding that would be made available in this budget phase. With that in mind, we had to focus more intently on our known challenges, using our limited funding to first address structural deficits, fund existing board policies, and pay for the county's contractual obligations, legal judgments, and settlements, before considering the new many initiatives that were requested. I'll take the next slide, please. So this budget prioritizes critical needs and obligations. Despite the fiscal challenges we're facing, this budget phase does include some targeted investments to address urgent needs, as indicated on this slide, and I'd like to go into a little more detail. These include the $692 million that was allocated in the recommended budget to fund our response to the homeless emergency by adding $16.3 million in state funding for enhanced care in interim housing units, and to pay incentives to landlords to take on tenants with rent subsidy vouchers. We know that that has been a struggle for us in the county, and this funding helps us smooth the way and incentivize landowners to rent to Section 8 vouchers. Next, we've made meaningful strides in improving conditions in the county's jail's inmate reception center, as evidenced by our recent settlement with the ACLU, but we know that there is much more work to do, and we are committed to continuing that momentum. This includes moving more people with mental health needs out of custody and into community-based care whenever possible. This budget provides $29.9 million in existing Care First community funding, investment funding for those efforts. More specifically, this funding would be used by ODNR to expand beds in our community pursuant to the P3 and the P4 report, where the recommendations were adopted by the board earlier this year. Next, we are also committing $52 million to create a broader continuum of mental health treatment beds that allows for more targeted treatment for those in custody to meet the board's Care First vision and to comply with the Department of Justice's consent decree. Just by way of background, this $52 million would be split between Correctional Health Services, which is housed in our Department of Health Services, and the Sheriff's Department. On the issue of providing more and expanded programs, there is about $19 million that would be allocated to Correctional Health Services. And I'll just run through really quickly a list of what those services entail. There would be expansion of the psychiatric urgent care unit, which is also called the jail inpatient unit. There would be expansion of the medication-assisted treatment program, which basically provides treatment and other supports for those who are struggling in our jails with opioid use disorders. There is the North Mental Health Medication Program. This program would increase the number of housing beds for inmates that are classified as P1s and P2s by moving them to the Pitches Detention Center North. There have been modifications made to that facility that would make it more appropriate to have our individuals who have been classified as P1 or P2 to, so that they can receive services in what's called a moderate observation housing unit, and that's also pursuant to our consent decree. We have also what's called a forensic inpatient program, step-down program. This program for health services, and specifically Correctional Health Services, will require and add eight positions to expand the FIP program and to provide care for inmates who are discharged from the inpatient unit that I discussed previously. The other thing that it will do is it converts traditional high-observation housing pods to what is called step-down high-observation pods, offering more therapeutic services, offering unrestrained out-of-sale and socialization time, and more programming opportunities. All things that we know the DLJ consent decree requires and the DLJ monitor has been insisting on. There will also be funds for telehealth expansion that would allow staff and allow folks in our facilities to receive services quicker using technology. There is the mental health group services. This would add additional mental health group services to allow inmates unrestricted out-of-sale recreation time and therapeutic time. There is the Correctional Treatments Center. That would add 25 positions in Correctional Health Services for nursing support, and it establishes a forensic inpatient unit of 46 licensed beds. As Correctional Health Services expands these programs in programming and they add staff, both the staff and inmates in our facilities will need to be supervised, transported sometimes, to receive these services and programming opportunities. And so the funding that you see on the sheriff's side is for overtime to ensure appropriate supervision of folks who are receiving programming and this unstructured time, as well as to ensure the safety of the mental health clinicians and the providers who will be offering these services. There are two other pieces on this slide that's included in the $52 million that are not included on the health services side. One piece is sanitation and processing. There is $2.3 million, including that $52 million, to maintain higher cleaning standards in the jails. And there is also an addition of clerks that would process paperwork and other matters more, well, in a more timely fashion, to assist issues at our inmate reception center. That was the first thing. The second thing is there's $2.6 million that's included in this $52 million that would relate to the Rosa's case. Specifically, it is intended to address the Rosa's case requirement of use of force incidents in the jails and to ensure more timely reporting and more timely investigations. The entire $52 million supervisors is currently parked in an account that we call the PFU, and it was allocated actually in last year's budget. What this action recommends today is that we move the money out of that account and put it in the budgets of the departments that will be doing the work so we can actually move forward with implementing. And finally, we're also recommending $117.8 million to restructure our juvenile probation system as we move predisposition youth to Los Pedrinos Juvenile Hall as part of a major and cultural reset of juvenile operations under the guidance of the department's new interim chief, Guillermo Villarosa. This move has been something that the county has placed a lot of thought into and was precipitated by the BSCC finding, where it found our juvenile halls unsuitable. And so we needed to a place where we could house our youth in a space that was appropriate and suitable to them. The $117.8 million figure is what you see to basically upgrade many aspects of the Los Pedrinos facility, and that work has been undergoing at breakneck speed so that we are able to move our youth from Berry J. Neidorf to Los Pedrinos and still meet our BSCC obligations. The last thing, there are a couple of things that are not called out on this slide, but I think that they are very important to our constituents and key investments. One is to bolster the Department of Children and Family Services staffing in the Antelope Valley. We know that DCFS traditionally has had a challenge recruiting and maintaining staff in that area, and so this budget recommends an allocation for that. Next is to provide older adults with greater access to technology and digital services. And then also, there's an allocation recommended to help immigrants and refugees with cash assistance and employment programs. I'll take the next slide, please. So I talked earlier about the 552 positions, and they are displayed on this table. This slide takes a different look at how those new budgeted positions This slide takes a different look at how those new budgeted positions will support board-directed priorities across the county, rather than what we would normally do was, which is to provide a table that shows the number of positions that each department would receive. Since major efforts frequently cross departmental lines, we thought a chart of this nature would be more helpful and help the board place these investments in a context related to your board priorities. They are listed alphabetically within inflects of new positions to support anti-racism efforts, Care First Jail's Last reforms, child protection, our healthcare center, our healthcare system, and the homeless initiative, also reflected our new positions to expand adult protective services in our Aging and Disabilities Department. I'll take the next slide, please. So our fiscal outlook and budgetary pressures. Ever since we unveiled the recommended budget in April, you've heard me raising serious concerns about the fiscal challenges ahead of us, and today unfortunately is no exception. So first and foremost, we continue to prepare for the potential very, very large budgetary impacts of AB two eighteen, which is a state law which temporarily lifted the statute of limitations to permit survivors of sex assault cases to come forward and claims alleging abuse in our county facilities and programs. As you know, and as we have shared before, the potential liability and settlement costs associated with AB two eighteen range anywhere from one point six billion to three billion dollars. What's more, another bill on the horizon, AB four fifty-two proposes to lift the statute of limitations permanently for sex assault cases arising on or after January first, 2024, which would, of course, would have an even more profound impact on our budget for many years to come. I'm happy to report supervisors that last week I visited Sacramento and visited with Senator Addus, who is the author of AB four fifty-two, and explained that the county wants to be on the right side of history on sexual assault cases, but we must also preserve our ability to provide healthy, health, social services, mental health services, basically to preserve our safety net, and that our office, my office, wanted to work with her to figure out a way to focus on how AB four fifty-two would be implemented. Even though this is a budget presentation, I'd like to take a moment to state that this is more than just a budgetary issue for the county. In terms of four fifty-two and both AB two eighteen, we know that we will receive a lot of allegations and that the potential and the alleged abuse in those cases where it actually happened will, will have had a devastating impact on survivors. Hence, our offer to work with Senator Addus on AB four fifty-two. In addition, I'd like to underscore, underscore that we are committed to building on the numerous steps that we have already taken to overhaul the systems that gave rise to the deplorable conduct being alleged, including the closure of McLaren Hall over two decades ago. While the AB two eighteen cases are the biggest issue on the horizon, they are not the only area of concern. We expect continuing financial commitments may be needed to comply with the DOJ consent decree and other court actions related to the jails. We must also address structural budget deficits in the Fire Department, the Department of Children and Family Services, and our library system. Also of concern is the expiration of Measure H in 2027. Measure H currently generates about five hundred million dollars in annual funding to provide housing and services to people experiencing homelessness and is a key component of our urgent response under the emergency declaration. And finally, the cooling trends in the housing market put local property taxes, which is the primary source of the county's locally generated revenues, at risk of a slowdown. We expect to see the impact of this slowing market in next year's budget cycle. Our review indicates that the housing sales for the first four months of this year are down forty percent than they were at the same time a year ago. Matt, I'll take the next slide, please. So you've seen this slide before. We continue to update it regularly, but as a reminder, the more manageable concerns are highlighted in yellow in a smaller type font at the lower left hand of the document, while the more concerning issues and threats are in the dark red and bigger type at the upper right. I won't spend a lot of time in this slide. I think we've, we've show it at every budget phase, so I'll move on to the next slide. Preview of supplemental budget. So as indicated on the video, and as you know, we conclude our annual budget cycle with the supplemental budget, which comes before the board in October. Our expectation is that there will be little or no revenue for allocation during this phase. Any available funds will likely come from fund balance generated when we close the books for the fiscal twenty-two, twenty-three year. That means dollars that went and spent, for example, because of a slower-than-expected hiring for tough-to-fill jobs. We will need to continue to prepare to meet our financial obligations related to legal settlements brought under AB two eighteen, as I mentioned earlier. County Council has also highlighted other legal settlements that are anticipated to reduce available fund balance at closing. We are also continuing to monitor exactly how the state's deficit may affect the county. I'll take the next slide, please. So what comes next? As I mentioned, we will return to your board with recommendations for the supplemental budget on October third. Once approved by the board, that budget will become the county's final adopted budget for fiscal year twenty-three, twenty-four. Another important step in the annual budget process will be the board's approval of recommendations for the year three spending plan for Care First Community Investment Programs and Services, which we expect to bring to your board next month. Next slide, please. So supervisors, this concludes my presentation. I want to thank the board for your leadership and commitment during a time when difficult choices need to be made to keep our budget in balance. We're also grateful to your staff, especially your budget deputies, for their hard work and partnership throughout this process, and at this time, I would be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, but I think it is the will of this board that we listen to the public first before we ask our questions or make remarks. So we will now take public comments on all budget items, and for members of the public on the telephone, please press one then zero now to address this board. Executive Officer, please read the call-in information that was also provided on the agenda and explain the speaking rules.
For members of the public wishing to participate remotely, as indicated on the agenda, please call eight seven seven three three six four four three seven and use participant code number one three six six seven eight six. Members of the public participating remotely and in the boardroom, you will receive ninety seconds to address the board on all budget items. Please state your name and clearly indicate the agenda item numbers you will be addressing. For members of the public joining us remotely, please remember to turn down the volume on your device as soon as the moderator calls on you, or there will be an echo. To ensure we hear from both in-person and telephonic speakers, we will alternate between the two speaking queues. Members of the public who are in attendance, when you hear or see your name displayed on the screen, please come down to the front of the boardroom and staff will assist you. Please do not approach the podium until directed to do so. We will begin by calling in-person speakers, and while they are coming forward, we will take telephonic speakers.
Will the following individuals please come forward and staff will assist you? Ace Ananya, Adam Sekuya Cohen, Allison Rumfield, Ambrose Brooks, Andrea Vocos, Andres Diaz, Anthony Arenas, Antigon Robinson, Armin Jay, Asail Robello, Braylen Baker, Brooklyn Love, Brian Ocampo, Brian Jose, and Christine Tran. Please come forward and staff will assist you. Moderator, we have the first remote speaker, please.
As a reminder to address the board, if you have not already done so, please press one then zero this time. Do not press one then zero a second time, or you will be removed from the queue. Our first participant is Roy Humphries. You have one minute. Please begin.
Okay, first of all, item three, page six, we need to put in there for the budget the, the RV parking situation, emergency, a change in that code to make it so that from ten PM to six AM in the morning, no parking on the public streets. Also, you've still failed to establish a county-wide system, the transient camps, those people are not changing their behaviors, and that's a, just a terrible thing to do. Okay, and St. Luke's Hospital has been declared a nuisance over the past year. Why haven't you scooped that up for a site like you did with the Seventh Avenue over in Hacienda Heights? And also, we could fast-track that housing unit situation over at the golf course there in the Walnut slash Roland Heights to get some more funds for funding this entire homeless, alleged homeless and transient situation. And we could also do cleaning the, the public sidewalks where they would have to remove their camping stuff so that they power wash the sidewalks, and then they could move back. Similar situation which we're doing with the RVs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Ann Alisa Carr. You'll have ninety seconds. You may begin.
Good afternoon, supervisors. My name is Ann Alisa Carr with the American Heart Association, a member of the L.A. Producers Coalition. We have been advocating for a six million dollar investment in Market Match and are disappointed it was not included in the upcoming budget. As the county prioritizes funding the most urgent needs in our communities, I implore you, add nutrition security to the list of critical and high-priority issues in Los Angeles. Two point five million people are in need of nutrition assistance, and Market Match is a resource to many of them. Food and nutrition insecurity are impacting one out of every four people in our county who struggle daily to feed themselves and their families. We have heard from residents that inflation, the high cost of food, and massive reductions in CalFresh leave them no choice but to cut down to one or two meals a day. Market Match doesn't just improve nutrition security, helping families in need with fruits and vegetables. It is a benefit to the local economy and small businesses. One dollar spent from incentive programs like Market Match generates at least five dollars worth of local economic activity. We ask that you fund this critical public health program, which can bring relief to many in our county. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Wendy Miranda. You have ninety seconds. You may begin.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, yeah, thank you. Hi, my name is Wendy Miranda. I'm a resident of SC four and I'm with Espanta Community Housing located in SC two and with the Reimagine L.A. Coalition. I'm here to urge the Board of Supervisors to reevaluate the recommended budget that has been introduced by the CEO. This proposed budget does not reflect the Care First approach, which is something that community has been asking for. I urge you all to fully fund Care First Community Investment by allocating at least nine hundred million in funding from the county budget and adopt the Reimagine L.A. County Care First Budget that elevates the Care First demand, which include closing the Mount Central Jail by March twenty twenty-five, allocating two hundred seventy-five million for mental health treatment beds, reducing investment in law enforcement, funding youth justice reimagined, and committing to building the Care First vision through authentic community collaboration, power sharing, and participatory budgeting to ensure consistent equitable investment. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Brianna Seguenza. You have ninety seconds. Please begin.
My name is Brianna Seguenza, and I'm a resident of Janice Hans District four and a member of the Reimagine L.A. Coalition and coordinator of AdFensa. I would like to speak on agenda item number two. I urge the county of Board of Supervisors to fully fund Care First Community Investment by allocating at least nine hundred million in funding from the county budget and adopt the Reimagine L.A. County Care First Budget that elevates the Care First demand. By committing to the Care First vision and authentically collaborating with our community by power sharing and using participatory budgeting, we can ensure equitable investments in our community. Investing any funds, but especially for nine point six million dollars to remodel jails that you have committed to closing is greatly concerning and does nothing to address the racism and violence perpetrated within the jail walls. We have had twenty-four deaths in twenty-five weeks while in LASD custody. This is unacceptable, and remodeling jails won't fix this. My communities are still dying because the board refuses to invest and take time to consider alternatives to invest to incarceration. As a constituent, taxpayer, and voter of Janice Hans District, we will remember your vote on these items, so I demand that we invest in alternatives to incarceration of our young people, invest in their freedom, invest in their healing, their mental health, our communities, and youth centers. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Lourdes Karakosa. You have ninety seconds. You may begin.
Thank you. Good afternoon. My name is Lourdes Karakosa. I am from East Los Angeles, born and raised, currently CEO and president of Elmo Family Services, run a nonprofit that serves our community. I wanted to provide my comment in support of funding the two-captain model in East Los Angeles Sheriff's Station and the other stations. Sadly, the East LA Station has had issues that have impacted how services are provided to our residents in our area. I think this model would be helpful and would provide the department with a tool to help alleviate staffing issues with an additional form of oversight and give our community accessibility to the leadership, which is assigned by assigning two captains, not just one. Thank you, supervisors, for all your work and effort. I ask that the supervisors support the budget, including funding for our two-captain model. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Eric Previn. You have ninety seconds. Please begin.
Thank you. It's Eric Previn from Studio City, and, you know, I appreciate what the board is trying to do with this budget, trying to smear it around in the right areas. There are a couple of things that are kind of non-negotiable for me. I know we've got the Olympics coming in twenty twenty-eight. It's really the city leading it, but we're all a part of it, and they promised all that money, a hundred and sixty million, to make sure the kids get some activity before the Olympics. I'm very worried about the lifeguard shortage, okay? And I know that we just jacked the prices up at the junior lifeguards. It's an embarrassment. Only Supervisor Hans stood up there. And what we need to do is make sure that we're not having closures during this hot and beastly summer so that the Angelinos who need to get in the water and cool off have a chance to do that, and we need to invent something quickly if we don't have the staff. I mean, we have so many new positions and wonderful ideas, and we're working on all the wonderful things, but we don't have anybody to fill these positions. I don't want to draw attention to like fifteen percent vacancy rate, but this is just, we're in very, very bad shape, so we gotta find a way to be more efficient and put things on the screen. One idea is to get those private equity D-bags from American Golf Corporation to cough up rather than have a fundraiser out at Chester, Washington, and Mackey Hathaway. Let them pay for the youth from the community to get a chance for, to get some, you know, support and some financial aid. I just don't understand.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Eric. Your time is up.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Big pleasure.
Our next participant is Hans Johnson. You have ninety seconds. You may begin.
Thank you, Chair Han and other supervisors. I want to wish you a happy Pride Month, and thank you for your efforts to make the visibility of the LGBT community, which is under attack in L.A. County and nationwide, more visible during this Pride Month, and to thank you for the celebration of this important milestone, which recognizes and commemorates resistance to police abuse by the LGBT community. I'm here specifically today as a member of the Civilian Oversight Commission to speak in support of item two B and specifically the two-captain model at the L.A. Sheriff's Department. I'm happy to echo the comments made earlier by my friend Lourdes Karakosa in support of this budget item. It will bring necessary oversight. of this budget item. It will bring necessary oversight, and it reflects a recommendation of our Civilian Oversight Commission to the Board of Supervisors to enhance this area of funding, and to increase supervision and public trust in the oversight of our Sheriff's Department. In particular, the East LA Station has been a locus of police gang violence, and we are hopeful that a two-captain model will increase supervision and cut down on this longstanding five-decade problem, which our commission has also documented, and sent recommendations to the Board regarding. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Luz Legaspi. You have 90 seconds. Please begin.
Good afternoon. My name is Luz Legaspi. I'm a resident of the incorporated part of East Los Angeles, and I also wanted to provide comment on 2B, the support of the funding for the two captain model at the East LA Sheriff's Station. Sadly, the East LA Station has had issues that have impacted service to provide to us residents in this area. I believe that providing to the department with the tool will help us and any staffing issues with additional form of oversight, which is assigning two captains, not just one, to help us improve our quality of life and any other issues that we experience in our area. I ask that the supervisors support the budget, including funding, and the two-captain model. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is, I apologize, our next participant is Paulina Chavez. You have 90 seconds. Please begin.
My name is Paulina Chavez, speaking on Item 2B, Bees and Boy. I'm a resident of District 2 and Director of Programs at Everwin, an international nonprofit working to close the digital divide that has served L.A. County for 10 years. We urge the Board to support adoption of the adjustments to the county budget that specifically provides funding for the Delete the Divide program to bring on 179 intern positions for young adults throughout the county. These interns will not only receive support in the form of paid internships with county IT staff and apprenticeships at top technology companies, but also have the opportunity to increase the impact of forthcoming federal and state investment in broadband by becoming digital navigators. In this role, they will be able to help county residents connect to the internet, access to digital inclusion resources such as the Affordable Connectivity Program, federal broadband subsidy, and learn new digital skills to stay connected for school, work, telehealth, and much more. On a day like today, when more than $1.8 billion federal dollars has been committed to California for broadband infrastructure and access, an I-vote on this item couldn't be more appropriate and impactful. Thank you Supervisor Solis for your leadership and commitment to the county's digital equity initiatives. We ask the Board for your consideration of an I-vote today, and thank you for your ongoing commitment to close the digital divide. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Our next participant is Jose Ruiz. You have 90 seconds. Please begin.
Good afternoon, members of the Board. I'd like to show support for Item 2B-2, specifically, funding for Belvedere Regional Park in the East LA community. As you may know, East LA has been one of the cities or areas with the least par access, and that also leads me to my next point. We need to do more about climate change and environmental justice, so I'd like to recommend that we do more when it comes to having workforce training to prepare the next generation, when it comes to fire resiliency, local food access in Los Angeles County. And I also want to thank the Supervisor in the 1st District, Hildegard Solis, for all the work that she's leading, both locally and at the national level.
Thank you. And then, are we going to in-person? Okay, welcome. Go ahead.
Good afternoon, Chair Han, Board of Supervisors. My name is Adam Sukijak Cohen. I'm speaking on behalf of AIDS Healthcare Foundation. I live in District 5, Pasadena. I'm speaking about Agenda Item 2B, the Public Health Item Number Four, regarding STD response additional funding. For five years and longer, STIs have surged. We now have 100,000 cases every single year in this county, and that is a county responsibility. And while these cases increase, of course, funding declined across the U.S., but these 100,000 cases are our responsibility. They affect communities of color, they affect LGBTQ+ population, and we at AHF want to ensure that the money that has been allocated this one-time $10 million that's being put on this budget is used appropriately and successfully. To accomplish this, we need to invest in surge models similar to how we've responded to COVID-19, because we are with an STI epidemic, and even MPOCs, in which AHF just diagnosed its fifth case over the weekend in Los Angeles. So we need to also ensure that we have opportunities for innovation, pop-up clinics, faster testing services. These kinds of investments can ensure that we can test the most number of people possible, because the most common STI symptom is no symptom. To do this, we have to get rid of the complicated paperwork. We have to address this insurance requirement that the county is trying to impose upon STI clinics, and I appreciate your time.
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Allison Rubenfeld. I am a resident of District 1. I am here with the ACLU of Southern California and a member of the Reimagine L.A. Coalition. I am here to comment on Agenda Item 1, 2A and 2B. On Agenda Item 1, on Item 16, the $350,000 allocation for a recreational vehicle and camp and pilot program, the Board must vote no. Measure H money is intended for housing and homelessness prevention. Tying this funding to the Sheriff's Department and impounding people's vehicles will make the housing crisis worse. Giving this money to law enforcement will inevitably lead to the criminalization of vulnerable low-income people living in RVs. This is an inappropriate use of Measure H money that directly contradicts the will of the voters. On Item 1, we ask that the Board vote yes to increasing the Affordable Housing Budget to support the conversion of project home key interim housing units to permanent housing. In regards to redundant items 2A and 2B, we urge the Board to move towards the county's Care First vision. That cannot happen if the Board continues to bloat the Sheriff's Department's budget while starving our communities from what we need. First, I urge the Board to consider the budget recommendations already submitted by the ACLU through a detailed letter and as supported by written public comment. Specifically, this Board must reject the $1.8 million to recruit more deputies. This proposed funding allocation will fuel LASD's excessive spending on LASD salary and benefits. The largest portion of LASD personnel spending is on patrol. Public data shows 80% of patrol spending is spent not on calls for service, but on pretextual stops.
Thank you. Thank you. Your time is up. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Buenos dias. Mi nombre es Azazel Roblero.
Good morning. My name is Azazel Roblero.
Yo vengo aquí porque incrementen más el presupuesto para el sistema de salud, en especial la salud mental.
I'm here so that you would increase funding for health services, specifically for mental health.
Porque yo creo que estar en una persona, estar en la cárcel con una enfermedad mental, no es lo correcto.
I believe that for a person with a mental illness to be in jail is not the correct thing.
Porque pienso que el sistema ha fallado, y dentro de la cárcel reciben abusos, se tatúan con jeringas que están infectadas con VIH, con hepatitis, y en lugar de ayudar, es una persona que entra con una enfermedad y sale con muchas enfermedades más.
So I believe that the system has failed. There are abuses that occur in jails, and people are tattooed with syringes. People with syringes, they ended up getting HIV, hepatitis. Instead of helping, they end up leaving with illnesses.
Y por eso pienso yo que con un mejor sistema de salud, con ayuda en programas para ellos, difícilmente prevenir la cárcel.
So I think therefore with a system of health that would be better, with better helps and programs for them, then it would be more difficult for them to be in jail.
Muchas gracias.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Brooklyn. I'm a resident of District 2 in a community organizer with the Young Women Freedom Center, and I stand before you today demanding change in the budget to focus on what our community needs. A lot of young girls who are incarcerated are victims and survivors of domestic violence, physical and mental abuse and trafficking. Orgs like the Young Women's Freedom Center are equipped to support them with reentry because our orgs are made up of girls who are similar, who share similar experiences, as I am an example of that. We are all aware of how much funding goes behind probation. We need to divert these funds and focus on the building of our youth to support their needs, because clearly, probation can't seem to get things together, and want to ask for more money, which is just ridiculous. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Chair Han and members of the Board. My name is Christine Tran. I'm a resident of District 1. I'm with the ACLU of Southern California and a member of the Reimagine L.A. Coalition. I'm speaking on 2A and 2B. The ask is simple. Invest in our community, invest in our well-being, invest in our healing, stop investing in the police. I'm here to uplift the ACLU's budget recommendation that's been sent to the Board. First, we strongly urge the Board to reject allocation of $1.5 million AB-177 backfill funds to the Sheriff's Department. Nothing in AB-177 suggests the county should allocate the backfill funds to the Sheriff's Department. These funds should go towards reentry programs and workforce and community development programs. Second, reallocate Sheriff's Department funding that could be better used to address L.A. County's housing and homelessness crisis. While we appreciate the Board's increased investment in housing resources, it should stop giving money to law enforcement approaches to homelessness, like the host team. That only makes it harder for people to get and stay housed. Third, revise the budget to end the Sheriff's Department's exploitation of L.A. County families. The county budget should provide a fee-free system of phone calls and end commentary markups in LASD jails, things the Board committed to doing more than two years ago but has failed to do, leading to costly and needless litigation. And finally, we urge the Board to be proactive in providing more support to low-income tenants, such as continuing funding for Stay House L.A. in order to prevent more people in the county from becoming unhoused. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. Hi, good afternoon. My name is Andres Diaz, and I am AHF volunteer, and I would like to say there is no enough funding for STD in L.A. County. For years, we hoped things would get better, but there are no more STD every year. No more babies need to die from syphilis. We can't stop it. We march for action. We won't stop until the Board promises more funding for STDs. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Andrea Vocos. I'm a resident of District 1, and I'm also a community organizer with L.A. Voice. L.A. Voice is a multiracial, multi-faith community organization that awakens people to their own power, training them to speak, act, and work together to transform our county into one that reflects the dignity of all people. We are made up of 65-plus diverse churches, synagogues, and mosques representing more than 40,000 families in L.A. County. Together, we are leading and supporting some of the most important fights for justice and equity in the region. I strongly urge the Board of Supervisors to divest from the $4 billion carceral system to invest in our communities. It's a shame that the county gives the Sheriff's Department over 36 times the amount of general funds it gives to homeless and housing services. The amount the county has allocated to the LASD has only continued to rise. With the county approving on LASD budget over $3.8 million for the 2223 fiscal year, representing a billion-dollar increase over the last 12 years, another world is possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Antigone Robinson with AIDS Healthcare Foundation. I'm here today in support of the additional public health funds for STIs and to ask for increased support for marginalized communities. Populations disproportionately affected by STIs not only have a high risk of STI infection, but also less access to care. In other words, BIPOC and other disadvantaged communities are likely to both become infected by an STI and suffer the long-term health complications that result from a lack of treatment. In L.A. County, the syphilis incidence rates for African-Americans in 2021 and 2022 were more than double the representation of the total population. Additionally, when compared to white people nationwide, African-Americans are almost twice as likely to refrain from seeking healthcare due to cost and to not have insurance. We ask the Board of Supervisors to prioritize the STI crisis and work with CBOs to reduce the disproportionate share of chronic conditions that BIPOC and other communities face. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Anthony Arenas. I'm from District 3, and I wanted to speak against this budget recommendations. The CEO is proposing $49.6 million to remodel, and already unacceptable conditions in county jails, when really, the county should instead look at viable ways to fund decarceration efforts. And the county is spending nearly $1 billion every single year to incarcerate over 13,000 people, even though 50% of the jail population is pretrial, many of whom are detained simply because they cannot afford to pay bail. And the county is spending nearly $1 billion to incarcerate folks who have not even been convicted of any crimes, and that's a shame and waste of funds. And this money is undoubtedly better spent with an investment in building a robust pretrial services system outside of the probation department. And furthermore, the Sheriff's Department needs to fire every single deputy gang member. That savings alone, that savings alone from firing every single deputy gang member could cover the $6.6 million to the Office of Constitutional Policing. And the Sheriff's Department should not receive one more penny for personnel unit until it fires said deputy gang members on its payroll. And in general, what the community has been demanding is care, not cops. The community needs investments in mental health workforce to include clinicians, social workers, crisis response teams, and long-term caregivers.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Your time is up. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Braylon Baker with the AIDS Healthcare Foundation. In 2022, there were over 10,000 cases of syphilis, over 26,000 cases of gonorrhea in L.A. County. These cases should be 100% avoided with a direct plan of action from L.A. County that focuses on funding eye-catching public health messaging and collaboration and transparency with community-based organizations who run sexual health services. CBOs like AHF, APLA, L.A. LGBT Center, and others have the trust of the community to test, counsel, and treat. You trust us to do the bulk of your testing, and yet we face roadblocks at many turns. During the MPOC outbreak last year, you didn't trust the CBOs to test and vaccinate. We had to make a case to you of how much of the impacted population we serve in order for you to give us more than a handful of vaccines. That showed us how little you think of the community providers and the impacted populations that you didn't see, where these populations were turning to when they needed services. We ask you to work with us and to be transparent in how the $10 million will be spent to bolster services. We can make an impact on the STI crisis together. Thank you.
Thank you. And before we get to the next speaker, we need to call a few more names of people who want to speak.
Yes, with the following individuals, please come forward and staff will assist you. Sienna Correa, Danielle Gonzalez, Danielle Vapi, Dr. Eric S. Carreno, Elaine Stein, Elizabeth Gandhi, Emilio Zapin, Enrique Beiza, Fernando Barrientos, Francisco Salcido, Gabriela Vázquez, Hector Ramírez, Helen Jones, Isaiah Barber, and Yvette L. Ferolito.
Okay, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Brian. I'm currently a resident of Los Angeles County, and I'm a member of the Anti-Recipitive Coalition. Today, I would like to speak about the budget, and I'm a formerly incarcerated individual. Three weeks ago, I was released from life in prison, and I'm happy to be back. But one thing that is concerning is the fact that the budget is trying to be directed towards law enforcement, where instead it could be rightfully used within the communities. 12 years ago, I liked those resources, and I ended up in prison. And I believe that if the resources are spent correctly and within the community, not only into mental health, but also family centers, as well as different diversion groups, as well as communication skills, we can stop the generational cycle of violence that does sometimes affect our communities. Doing so not only enhances public safety, but also creates great and healed individuals. So with that, I just want to say thank you so much, and...
Thank you. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Ace Anaya, and I am from Supervisor District 2. Good afternoon, Board. I'm here speaking from the organization Translational Coalition. We are part of the RILA Coalition that wants to end cages and invest in care. So one really important study I want to cite today is the California statewide study of people experiencing homelessness. The most robust study does come out in the state, and it directly shows that the reason most people are homeless or unhoused in California and most likely in Los Angeles is because of housing issues, right? Housing and affordability. There is a very real jail-to-homelessness pipeline, where more than 3/4 of people surveyed have been incarcerated at some point, and after coming out of incarceration, 43% that were in probation or parole became unhoused, and they received no health care or benefits upon release. There is no support, especially for our transgender, gender nonconforming, and intersex individuals, which often don't even have housing opportunities that are safe to them and face discrimination in housing after. We should continue to defund prisons, probations, and police officers, and fund our communities. We should continue to defund prisons, probations, and police officers, and fund our communities. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, yes, my name is Ambrose Brooks. I'm a resident of District Five and a member of the Justice L.A. and Reimagine L.A. Coalition. What we have here is not a care-first, jails-last budget. It's a jail-first, care-last budget. The budget has increased 44% since fiscal year 2011. The number of sheriff deputies has also increased. The jail population, however, has decreased by 5% during that same period. L.A. S.D. is not equipped to work inside of the jails, and L.A. S.D. cannot staff itself out of this reality, period. We've seen this firsthand this weekend with the L.A. Times investigative piece, where Sheriff's Department deputies were storing and passing around footage of brutality and medical negligence inside of the jails. In less than six months, 24 people have lost their lives inside of L.A. County jails, and this horrific loss of life is due in large part to the sheriff's own culture of violence and indifference to the lives of those incarcerated. Once again, the Sheriff's Department is asking for a $4 billion budget to increase its staffing levels. The Board must consider the consequences of greenlighting a status quo budget for L.A. S.D. Approving the $4 billion request means $4 billion to a department plagued by deputy gangs, $4 billion to a department that stands idly by while people die inside L.A. S.D. custody, and $4 billion to those responsible for terrorizing and murdering our community members. The only way forward out of L.A. S.D.'s brutality is to reduce L.A. S.D.'s budget, reduce L.A. S.D.'s staffing levels, and to close Men's Central Jail. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Armon, and I'm here to talk about probation's juvenile institutions budget. The fact that you pay people to treat kids like animals just makes you inhumane. I'm really lucky that I have no unmet needs, but when I do, there are people for me. When kids have unmet needs, you put them in cages. That is creating more hurt, and you are just making them more soft. And when they get released, with all that hurt, they end up causing more harm, because hurt people hurt people. When you are hurting, you want to feel seen, but these kids are hurt, and you're just putting them in cages, causing more hurt. Someone would even think that is the answer. It's just wild. How dare you give over $400 million to a place that just creates harm? You think you're making the world a better place? That is the biggest joke I've heard in my life, and I've heard a lot of jokes. How can investing in kid jails be better than investing in schools, soccer, swim, art classes, music lessons, robotics classes, libraries, housing, all the things that I've had access to? The things that keep me busy, the things that make me laugh, that make me dream, that make me hope, that make me curious. Jails don't give you any of those things. If this is a budget that's going to be making jails better, you're just making lives worse. And maybe you don't care, because in your world, politics are more important than the lives of children. And that really says a lot about you and your morals. I want to live in a world where jails are never the answer, so you do your jobs correctly, especially if you want my generation to ever respect you, which we don't really right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello. Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Byron Jose with the TransLatinal Coalition and Reimagine L.A. The recommended budget process has come and gone again, right? We find here ourselves, you're deliberating to vote on it, finalize it, and move on. And yet again, the Sheriff's Department, the probation department, and all of the different systems and carceral institutions that we continue to fund continue to be priority for this budget. We want to make sure that we're working with your offices beyond just appropriating language, truly reflecting a care-first budget, and then ensure that there's an intentional investment in transgender expansive and intersex communities, specifically communities that are impacted because they're black, right? We can see that the jail populations, there are people who have substance abuse issues, different impacted communities with lived experiences. So we want to make sure that the Board, the CEO office, is able to incorporate that. At the meeting earlier this month, on June 6, I believe it was Supervisor Barger and then Supervisor Solis, we were discussing the ODR and the beds and all these reports. But again, we were being pushed for working, the community wants to work with your office to really put this on the agenda, and let's really look at the plan to close these jails, to truly fund the communities, and making sure that we're not just asking the community for their input in an extractive manner, but we're actually engaging them and truly reflecting what the community needs. So you need to close these jails now, and you need a true care-first budget.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Chair Han and Supervisors. My name is Danielle Butler Vapi, and I'm the interim executive director for the Civilian Oversight Commission. The Commission is in support of the Sheriff's Department budget request for three additional captains, specifically to address the issue of deputy gangs. The Commission's recommendations were unanimously adopted by this Board at its March 7 meeting, including A-7, which encourages a two-captain model at select stations to ensure maximum supervision and mentoring of lieutenants and sergeants. The recommendations suggested one captain for operations and one for administrative functions. The two captains at larger stations that are busy and problematic, that have historically been entrenched with misconduct by deputy gangs and cliques, would allow department leadership to provide heightened focus on station culture, deputy misconduct, and to enforce violations of deputy policies. It will also ensure accountability to address insubordination from deputy gang members that arise in some stations. While the Commission remains concerned with the expansion of the department's budget in any way, it believes that a short-term negative impact of $1.5 million increase will eventually be offset by a reduction in deputy gang behavior in the department, which has required the county to pay out millions of dollars in settlements to families of young men who were unnecessarily killed by deputies seeking membership in deputy gangs or cliques. Thank you, Supervisors.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Elaine Stein. I'm vice president of the Friends of Robinson Gardens. I'm in favor of 2A and 2B. For 40 years, the Friends of Robinson's Gardens have had an exceptional working relationship with the county. Our educational program has been well-received by Title I schools. The Title I children participate, learn about gardens, food, nutrition, plants in our world, and environmental issues. In five semesters, we have had 7,000 children in the Title I programs at Robinson Gardens. With all the sobering problems facing the L.A. County, the public more than ever needs a calming escape of a public garden. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Honorable Board of Directors, Board of Supervisors. My name is Dr. Eric James S. Carreno. I was born and raised in East Los Angeles, within L.A. County District One, and I'm here addressing Agenda Two. As a two-spirited, indigenous, hard-of-hearing, and disabled individual, I have personally experienced being judicially impacted, homeless, and seeking mental health services within Los Angeles County systems. I speak to you as an individual from these communities, and also as a licensed clinical therapist dedicated to treat underserved individuals within L.A. County. I see the impact of your constituents struggling with mental health issues while trying to attempt navigating this complex system. Detailed comments were provided in writing, but to the point, I urge you, this committee and Board of Supervisors, to ensure that the MHSA funds are provided for underserved communities of Los Angeles County, and fully fund all proposed stakeholder projects as listed in the recent MSHSA annual update, and implement Measure J as passed by voters. My comments are called to action for this committee and the Board of Supervisors to ensure original funding allocation to be addressed to the mental health needs and health of their constituents. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Hector Ramirez. I am a resident of District Three. Can you hear me now? Hello, my name is Hector Ramirez. I am a resident of District Three. I'm actually taller than this microphone, and I'm really happy to be able to see you in person, although the pandemic has been calling in. But definitely kind of highlighting the recent, having ASL sign language interpretation makes this board meeting accessible. Until this time, your bashing process hasn't been accessible, particularly for people with disabilities like myself, who've made requests to have sign language and card available. So just really want to highlight the point. Now, we need to fully fund, as my colleague mentioned, the MHSA stakeholder processes that were included. And just as I realize that there's a priority to fund care card and to move everything else, there should be the same type of urgency and funding, not only to close Men's Central Jail, but to fund all mental health services. As a consumer of the Department of Mental Health, which is the largest public health system in the country, it is broken. It is severely underfunded by county money, primarily funded by our state funders, and as a result, it has created significant disparities, not only to people with disabilities, to the Latino-Hispanic community that were left out, literally left out, out of the stakeholder process when they refused to provide material in Spanish. We had difficulty obtaining materials, not only in Spanish, but in English. So for those reasons, I ask you to fund Measure J and really reimburse into our communities, into our care-first, jails-first system.
Thank you. And thank you for bringing up the issue of the ASL interpreter. I will work with our executive office to see about having that at all of our meetings.
Thank you. Los Angeles County has the second-largest population of deaf people in the United States, and we are residents, and we vote.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Sienna Correa. I'm here with the AIDS Healthcare Foundation, and today, my colleagues and I marched to this hearing from the L.A. Department of Public Health, a symbol of our call for greater public health care and attention to HIV and STI resources. Compared to this time last year, HIV cases are up by 15%, and syphilis continues to spread disproportionately among men, specifically Black, Latino, and LGBTQ men, plus men, who comprise the overwhelming majority of cases. It is well documented per Public Health that the STI crisis was exacerbated by the pandemic, and yet, the AIDS Healthcare Foundation Testing Center, Wellness on Western, is one of the last sites that can afford to operate walk-in testing for HIV. Other safety net sites have had to be careful of their costs since the L.A. County stripped supportive funding for testing. We call on you, the Board of Supervisors, to stop shutting out community-based providers like you did during MPOCs. This time last year, we had to appeal to the Department of Public Health for more than a handful of vaccines to give to our impacted clients. That is not the way to quickly address a public health emergency. Please create consistent funding to support community partners who are doing this lifesaving work for vulnerable populations. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello. Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Danny Gonzalez, and I'm a policy advocate for the Los Angeles LGBT Center, speaking today in support of the $10 million one-time funding for STI services. Los Angeles County has been experiencing a public health emergency in regards to our rapidly increasing rates of STIs. I urge the Board to prioritize the treatment and testing of STIs without pulling funding from other vital health resources tackling HIV and monkeypox. These are all major epidemics impacting our community, and we must react with an urgent syndemic response to ensure L.A. County is well-cared-for on all fronts. We look forward to continuing to work with the county and community-based organizations so that we can all work to continue to eliminate the epidemics that continue to ail our community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Board. My name is Helen Jones. I am the mother of John Horton. I was here 14 years ago. The gangs been killing way before 14 years ago, but I brung up at this board 14 years ago. And we really thought the jail would be shut down 14 years ago. 14 years ago. And I'm pretty sure nobody on this board today was here 14 years ago, maybe one person. So that just lets you see that all these problems with the Sheriff's Department and the county jail, just going from one board to another. And we just really hope that this board that's here today will shut this problem down and stop these deaths, because it is so many people dying. And I'm thinking from 14 years ago, I wouldn't see another death. Do you know how many deaths it's been since, for 14 years? How much money been paid out to families? We don't want the money. We want people held accountable and put in jail, and not one officer, not one of these gang-banging deputies been put in jail, not one. Look how much money been spent. Look how much money y'all have given the Sheriff's Department that has been wasted in covering up their crimes. Also, the county coroner is covering up deaths with the county department.
Thank you. Thank you. Your time has expired. Okay, I'm going to remind the audience, remember, hands up if you approve, thumbs down if you disagree. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Gabriela Vasquez. I'm a lifelong resident of the First Supervisory District, the deputy director of La Defensa, and a proud member of the Reimagine L.A. Coalition and the Justice L.A. Coalition. I'm here to speak on the 2023-2024 recommended budget and to urge this Board to reject the budget introduced by the county CEO. I want to remind you all of your commitment to care-first initiatives. A care-first approach requires real divestment from the institutions that incarcerate and traumatize our communities. 2023 has had 25 weeks, and in Los Angeles County, we have seen 24 deaths of fellow Angelinos while they were in the custody of sheriffs. A two-captain model will not eradicate deputy gangs or change L.A. S.D. culture of violence. This tells us that you are not implementing care-first policies fast enough. People are dying, waiting for the alternatives that you all said you would prioritize. What more do you need to see to be fully invested in moving dollars out of law enforcement and into care-first services? Now, the CEO is proposing $49.6 million to remodel county jails. A paint job will not address the inhumane conditions that exist when we incarcerate people. People cannot get well in cells. Our jails are overcrowded. At least 7,000 people are there pretrial because they cannot afford bail, and there are thousands more who need this Board to aggressively invest dollars towards mental health treatment and reentry services outside of these jails. We need the county to allocate at least $110 million a year towards supportive pretrial services and to divest from probation and law enforcement. We need this Board to commit to the closure of Men's Central Jail by 2025. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Yvonne Ale Ferolito, Executive Director of La Defensa and resident of District One. Behind me is the Justice L.A. Coalition, the Reimagine L.A. Coalition, the L.A. Youth Uprising Coalition, and we're here to tell you in one voice, stop funding probation, torture, and abuse. Stop funding share of violence. Stop funding incarceration. Stop funding what is killing and harming our people. You may notice images of tombstones in the crowd, images like this. Each represents each person who has died in our jail system this year alone, in the name of those who are losing their lives inside of MCJ, who are being beaten and tortured by the probation department in youth incarceration. Course correct this budget. Course correct. It is not too late. This budget acknowledges that there are serious problems with share of violence and jail conditions, but instead of investing in the care and freedom of the survivors, you are throwing more money at the very departments that are committing these atrocities. This is lipstick on a pig. Funding more captains does not address the culture ingrained in the Sheriff's Department and their very purpose of extracting, torturing, and incarcerating disappearing entire communities. $4 billion that you are putting into the Sheriff's Department is $4 billion of ammunition that they have to harm our communities. $49.6 million to remodel the jails is not addressing the conditions. The fastest way to improve conditions is by letting people go home and close MCJ. We want a deadline.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Han and Board of Supervisors. My name's Enrique, last name's Baiza. I'm here with A.H.F., and every single year, STIs get worse. There were nearly 10,000 cases of syphilis in L.A. in 2022. It is a true crisis right here in Los Angeles, and we cannot wait any longer to solve it. You must address this crisis with funding and messaging. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good evening, everybody. My name is Isaiah Barber. I'm with the Anti-Racism Coalition. I'm with the Policy and Advocacy Team. I'm formerly incarcerated myself. I've been incarcerated as a juvenile and an adult as well. Oh, okay. I've been incarcerated as a juvenile as well as an adult, and I would just like to speak on behalf of the budget and the juvenile halls, just in creating better programs for rehabilitation, oh, creating better programs for rehabilitation, and also safer and better conditions in the facilities, cleaner environments, better beds, better things like that, and also creating better reentry programs for people when they do come back to the outside community, like creating more grants and stipends for formerly incarcerated youth and people that have been incarcerated. Thank you for your time. That's all I would like to say.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Fernando Barrientos, and I come from Watts, where incarceration has done its damage to my community through overpolicing and the lack of proper funding for restorative justice programs. The cost of $1 million to incarcerate a young life is not worth anything at all. It is disappointing to see, as a member of the community, the lack of awareness that you supervisors have for our county and for my community. As much as I am enraged to be aware of this fact, I know there is a space for you all to improve the quality of life here in our home. I can see a world where all you agree to, fund youth justice reimagined by shifting a minimum of $75 out of probation as a part of the care-first budget, but it doesn't have to stop there, because you all know there is much more to be done. have to stop there, because you all know there is much more to be done. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Francisco Salcido. I'm volunteering with A H F. The county's plan for S T Is is not enough. Every year, the rate on S T Is increases, but the funding decreases. Nothing will change if you don't take action now. Fund S T Is testing and treatment, please, now.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Emilio Sapián with the Youth Justice Coalition, L A Youth Uprising, and all the other coalitions here today. We got a big squad. I'm here to urge the Board to pass the Care-First budget to free our future, to close Men Central and cut the 247 excess juvenile probation vacant positions and the $6.6 addition to a million dollars for probation salary raises and reallocating the $416 million towards juvenile probation dollars back to Youth Justice Reimagine and the Department of Youth Development as well as community-based care. This proposed $117 million to reopen Los Pedrinos instead of releasing young people is literally jail's first, care last. Have you Googled L A S D gangs? Did you know that it costs over $850,000 to incarcerate one young person per year? Please stop locking up our future. We need investment into spaces like Chuco's Justice Center in South Central, which serves as a high school and a second home to many young people impacted by incarceration, police violence, deportation, school, school pushout, probation, and arrest. We need a Care-First budget in honor of the life of Brian Diaz, who passed away in probation custody. In honor of his life, I yield the rest of my time for a moment of silence. Please protect our young people.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Katarina Valvay Thompson, Registered Nurse and S E I U 721 Healthcare Regional Director. I am here on behalf of our President and Executive Director, David Green, and the 55,000 of your county employees whom we proudly represent. Honorable Supervisors, we come to you today to urge you to invest your budget dollars in all our correctional health professionals, not only selective classifications. We are confident that this investment will lead to the results we all need retaining and recruiting healthcare staff. Our workforce in correctional health must work as one team. Their group morale, their esprit de corps is essential. The county is wisely proposing a 20% bonus to address this current crisis. The union supports this. However, the current exclusion of about 250 of our correctional health professionals is unfortunately creating two separate classes of staff, and this works against our common goals. We respectfully ask you to extend this crisis bonus to all your correctional health workforce members. Together, we can be the solution. Thank you.
Thank you. And now we're going to call a few more names of speakers who want to address the Board.
With the following individuals, please come forward, and staff will assist you. Cynthia Carion, Patty Montoya, Robert Harper, Louis Romero, Lisa Medina, Ricardo Ruiz, Latisha Rodriguez, Jaime Alejo, Ezico Calderon, Hazara Holliday, Janet Hughes, Jeremy Hampton, Jerry Abraham, Joey Williams, Jonathan Salcedo, Jordan Nguyen, Joseph Siena, Juan de los Santos, and Julio Lavender. Please come forward, and staff will assist you.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Cynthia Carion, also known as Nurse Carion. I'm a Registered Nurse who working in correctional health. I'm a proud member of S E I U Local 721. Los Angeles County can no longer afford to shoulder the economic and social costs of protracted litigation. The inmates languishing in our jails have a constitutional right to timely, adequate healthcare and a sanitary environment. You know far too well how dangerously overcrowded our jails are, and sadly, how long our medically vulnerable patients are forced to wait for access to care. The budget before you today is a living document that reflects your policies and priorities. I implore you to prioritize and stabilize the healthcare workforce in our jails. We can no longer afford to have nearly one in three positions vacant. We must do more to ensure that any corrective action employed by the county will actually stabilize our healthcare system and have real teeth. The flow of inmates through the I R C depends on it. The successful reentry of our carceral population into our communities depends on it. Instruct the C E O to extend the recruitment and retention bonus through the life of our M O U and not to leave any of our essential healthcare workers out of this bonus. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, Supervisors. I am Dr. Patty Montoya, an advanced practice medical provider, nurse practitioner, in Correctional Health Services. I am also a proud member of S E I U Local 721. As you are keenly aware, there's a critical workforce shortage in our jails. This crisis is so severe that nearly one in three budgeted healthcare positions were vacant in May of this year. The recruitment and retention bonus that the C E O is currently negotiating with S E I U does not reach out enough to remedy this crisis. As a correctional health medical provider, I can tell you that the brunt of patient care throughout the jails is carried out by nurse practitioners like me. So I can, so if you can understand why the department's proposed exclusion of N Ps from the bonus adds insult to injury. Supervisors, less than five years ago, your Board recognized the problematic recruitment and retention and opted to invest in putting 20-plus nurses from the county through university-level education to serve our disenfranchised population as N Ps. This new cohort of N Ps, specifically trained and recruited for the jails, are at the end of their commitment and are feeling left out. They're watching these negotiations very closely and considering leaving correctional health. I urge you to protect your investment, protect us, and protect our patients.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Robert Harper. Good afternoon. My name is Robert. I have been worked at the Twin Towers Correctional Treatment Center for nine years as an inmate crew leader. Every shift that I report to, I do my absolute best to mitigate conditions that place our inmate population at risk for contracting infectious and other diseases. Without a strong and fully-staffed workforce, these units are breeding grounds for potential infectious, and I know every day that I could be bringing home COVID, tuberculosis, lice, and other diseases to my families. I'm genuinely concerned about inmate health. Sometimes I may have the help of a trustee who I supervise. Often, I do not. Long wait times in some of the care units can come down to simply not having staff to clean up the rooms slash treatment areas, and when bodily fluids are involved, the work just takes longer. I won't take your time today and tell you how I've seen everything at the jails. Just know that we are an absolute essential to the workforce. I urge you to insist that the C E O include key sheriff's classifications in the recruitment and retention bonus and ensure that the bonus minimally extends through the life and current labor of the M O U. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Lisa Medina. I'm a licensed vocational nurse, known as nursing assistant at Men Central Jail. I'm here today as a proud S E I U 721 member, and I urge the Supervisors to direct D H S to support all correctional health workers at the negotiating table. It's disheartening to me knowing how hard we all work to see Los Angeles County repeatedly summoned into the courts because it isn't doing enough to ensure adequate and timely medical care for our client population. Inmates in our jails have a constitutional right to timely, adequate healthcare that falls on the shoulders of frontline healthcare workers. Many of the patients that we treat are scared or unhoused upon arrival. Some are agitated, and most have long-neglected healthcare problems. Today, my coworkers and I do work in rat infestation and daily walk through urine and feces because of the conditions there. Most days, we shoulder significant and precarious trauma, and we are definitely under chronic fatigue and overwork. We are in burnout. The proposers at the negotiating table fail to factor in the critical interdependence of the healthcare staff and operational and maintenance support staff in the struggle to get care to our patients in a timely manner. We need to retain all our correctional healthcare workers. I urge you to instruct the C E Os to extend the life of our M O U and not leave any healthcare people behind.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Ricardo Ruiz. I'm a mental health counselor, Registered Nurse in L A County Jail. I am very familiar with L A County Jail because I have worked there for 25 years. I am one out of five mental health counselors, Registered Nurses in the entire jail system. We are the only daily frontline Registered Nurses that specialize in mental health. Today, I would like to talk to you about all of the people that you left out of your 20% retention recruitment bonus. Being that I specialize in mental health, I am one of the nurses that is known for being able to convince clients voluntarily remain treatment compliant. I would like to make it clear that the only way I'm able to keep inmates treatment compliant and stable is by providing services with assistance from all the essential treatment members that you left out of your 20% recruitment and retention bonus. We're all part of an interdisciplinary team. It takes a team to give effective, efficient, and long-lasting treatment. When you exclude some essential team members from the recruitment and the retention bonus, it only manages to fracture the team members. The way the county currently has a 20% retention and recruitment bonus is, in my opinion, penny-wise but pound foolish. The question is, will you choose to pay providing, pay all the, all the C H S workers with a retention and recruitment bonus, or will the county continue to pay via lawsuits? It's your choice.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Elizabeth Gandhi. I am a substance abuse counselor assigned to the jails. I am here today as a proud S E I U Local 721 member and to urge the Supervisors to direct D H S to support all correctional health workers at the negotiation table. As a substance abuse counselor, I am aware of the very real challenges that often land our population in jail and the possibilities of them returning. It is disheartening for me, knowing how hard I work to see that D H S Correctional Health has specifically left me and my substance abuse colleagues off the list of essential classifications for the recruitment and retention bonus. I urge you, please, to demand that the recruitment and retention bonus provide parity to substance abuse counselors and other critical healthcare workers, who I fear may leave the county altogether if they do not receive their bonus. Our charge is way too important. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. My name is Latisha Rodriguez, and I'm here today as a patient care advocate. And I am also here to advocate on the behalf of my colleagues who are back at C R D F working and hoping for me to be their mousepiece as well. I am part of a large team of workers who show up to provide health services but who are frankly very stretched to their breaking points. Their willingness to serve brings a sadness that when I go to lunch, that I have to sit upon the workers who are not receiving this bonus. The care of the inmates receives is highly dependent on the stability and the overall morale of the workforce. I'm here to urge you and to demand that the C E O extend recruitment and retention bonus to all healthcare workers in our jails. The current proposal reflects a thrown-together list of classifications, a snapshot where there are reportedly higher vacancy rates today. But I can tell you that today's reality can change from one month to the next, and are the essential workers left out of this bonus are threatening to leave in the coming months.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Jaime Alejo, and I'm a dental assistant working for the jails. Supervisors, we're frontline healthcare workers, give correctional health an impact during the worst of the pandemic and we'll struggle to keep up today. I generally concern about imminent health, and I consider imminent health cases constitutional right, but providing dental care in a correctional dental is taxing. My job requires that I have very thick skin and enormous amount in empathy. The patients that I see are some of the sickest dental patients seen anywhere. And yeah, dental assistants are being left out of the recruitment and retention bonus that the C O B is currently negotiating with the Local 721. New dental assistants get discouraged to apply due to the pay costing or hardship due to the dental, to the dental department. I argue to you to demand that D H S provide parity to my coworkers, make these bonuses are going through our life and our current labor M O D and to everyone. Our patients need us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Joey Williams. I'm the Director of Organizing with the California Native Vote Project, also constituent, living in South Pasadena, Supervisor, Barger. California Native Vote Project represents over about 1 million people in L A County and 1.4 million across the state of California. I'm also a member of the C F C I Commission, elected and appointed by the L A City-City County Native American Commission. The American Indian, Alaska Native population has the highest incarceration rates, the highest police brutality rates, and the highest suicide rates per capita. When we talk about BIPOC, this county has committed to doing that, but at best, folks are just PAC. I can't speak for the African-American community, but I know the I is often left out. I'm asking you today to fund the 12 million that was left out of the 100 million funding, which should be 900 million for C F C I funding. 2.5 will include American Indian funding, also asking for that 10 million for mental health funding for the American Indian community to be included as well. We just celebrated Juneteenth, and y'all have 14,000 folks whose freedoms laying their hands in the Men Central Jail. Y'all gave an order a couple of years ago to close this jail, and it still has not been done. I see that the jails, not being closed is immoral. You know, power is ability to act. It's to reward and punish. We punished Alex V in the wave last November, and we gave you the power to do the same with the four, fifth vote. We're asking to move, disinvest from the carceral system.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Ezico, a community organizer with Young Women's Freedom Center. As a youth in the system, I know very well that system staff fail to show up when we need it most, and they're not showing up. The fact that I, the fact that there is a consideration to fund jail jobs for kids' continuous suffering is embarrassing and unacceptable. I know, I know youth need community and guidance, and that would keep us out of trouble and harm. Thank you for considering a budget for a better, free youth generation.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Jazara Holliday, formerly incarcerated youth. I'm here asking you to cut the 247 vacant excess probation job positions instead of $6.6 million for probation salaries. Invest in mental health services in my community. Invest in housing strictly for youth. Invest in my future. Did you know I wanted to be, do you know I want to be a radiologist? Do you know how much student loans is to me? It's a penny to you. Did you know my brother's into stocks? In what ways can you invest and build his future rather than hold him down the way you are? Do you know anything about the youth and your care, their dreams and admirations? Invest in that. Invest in therapy with no limitations as far as how the youth feels. Not only do y'all not try to get down to the root cause, when a youth does open up, they can't express their true feelings behind all the trauma they've endured because it comes with consequences based off words and not actions. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Jeremy, and I'm a member of the Anti-Racism Coalition. I'm here to advocate the budget on behalf of our youth. As a former lifer and youth offender, I believe you should invest in rehabilitating our youth instead of incarcerating them. The following points or ideas where I think the money would be well-spent. Classes and emotional awareness, Criminal and Gangs Anonymous, Victims Awareness, Victims Impact, and other youth offender programs. Other ideas are additional investment in decarceration pathways, investing in diversion through the D Y D, investing in reentry through the O R D and D Y D, and daily review of cases for young people awaiting trial to determine what they need and for young people awaiting trial to determine what they need in order to be released. Had I been afforded these opportunities as a youth, I truly believe I wouldn't have wasted 29 years locked in prison. Thank you for your time, and I urge you to fund our youth.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Juan de los Santos, and I'm here representing California Youth Connection and the Layup Coalition. I'm here in opposition to any increase to probation's budget. As of April of this year, LA County taxpayers are spending almost $1 million to incarcerate a single youth. Almost $1 million. That's over three times as much from 2016. Now probation is asking for more money when they can't even get enough staff members to show up to work, and those same staff members still get paid. If probation is having a budget problem, fire the people who don't show up to work. Lastly, the CEO of LA County, Fezia Davenport, in her report stated that almost 250 positions were not needed. This alone is over $12 million. If anything, part of probation's budget should instead be used to fund diversionary programs, programs that have already been proven to work, many without government funding, I might add. Probation does have a lot of problems. Needing money is not one of them.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, everyone. My name is Joseph. I'm formerly incarcerated as well. I got out after doing 13 years. I'm here to speak about the budget today because it's very important to me. And the reason is because I was one of those youth offenders that got arrested at 15 years old, and around that time, there wasn't no one at my school that asked me, A, was, is there something wrong, or is there something going on at home, or do you need help dealing with your trauma? And I feel like if we bring these programs to the community, into schools, into recreational centers, I believe that it will have a huge impact on, on our community. And instead of funding probation and law enforcement, I believe we start, we should start funding our children because the lives of our children matters.
Thank you. Thank you so much. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Janet Hughes, and I'm a member of SE Justice Group, a community of women with incarcerated loved ones fighting to end mass incarceration. I have been, I am a resident of Los Angeles. I'm here today to demand the Board of Supervisors close N CJ by 2025, allocating the 275 million for mental health bed treatments, and fully funding an independent pretrial service agency. Right now, I am the primary caregiver for my 43-year-old sister Venus with severe mental health needs. Venus is smart, caring, and loves her family and her son. She also has been diagnosed with schizoaffective disorder. It's heartbreaking, heartbreaking that the longest place she stayed over these last two decades has been in LA County Jail. As you know, struggling with mental health means that you are a target for the LA police, and there aren't enough, there aren't a lot of options beyond a 72-hour hold in a hospital here and there. Additionally, this year with SE Justice Group, I've helped bail out two black women in LA who were locked up pretrial in Linwood, all because they couldn't afford bail, when what they really needed was access to care, resources that could actually help them. Women with incarcerated loved ones and many community members here today know what we need for pretrial services, as is independent law enforcement, not community care. I mean, it's community care, not cages and surveillance.
Thank you. Thank you. Your time is up. Next, I think we're going to call more names before the next speaker.
Will the, will the following individuals please come forward and staff will assist you? Justin Marks, Kalia Liya Matthews, Karen Garcia, Kent Mendoza, Lauren Natoli, Leah Perez, Liv Gotti, Lisbeth Zambrano Sanchez, Loretta Lorraine, Lynn Whitaker, Mark Anthony Clayton Johnson, Matt Inouye, Michael De La Croada, Michael Andrade, Michelle Escheri, Melinda Kanaki, MJ King, Maura Greer, Rachel Mesner, and Ryan Phillips. Please come forward and staff will assist you.
Do we have another speaker? Yeah. Okay, go ahead.
Hi, my name is Julio. I'm with Anti-Racism Coalition. I'm a formerly incarcerated youth as well. I want to speak on the budget today on funding probation and LA County Sheriff. I want to say something about my past experiences in being inside. I felt like I never got help. I never got the, the, the healing or the proper treatment that I needed for, that I needed for myself. All I ever learned was just living with fear in a dark place and just living with resentment and just lost and confused. I want to speak on maybe we should start funding on helping out our youth and actually showing love to our youth and healing our youth, and let's just make a change. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Jordan Nguyen. I am the Community Activation Specialist with United Way of Greater Los Angeles, standing in support of the Care First Budget of the Reimagine LA Coalition. I hope, and I wish that there was more gravity, that everyone on this panel could sit with the stories of the families that have been affected by the gangs that have infected Los Angeles County Sheriff's Department. We should not be investing in spaces that are unsafe for our communities. We are hearing from both sides today. We are hearing folks who are within the carceral system, working within it, pleading for better conditions, hearing about urine and feces on the ground with folks. This is no way to rehabilitate folks within our society. We need to end this ancient method of caring for people and instead, invest in the communities that have shown up here today to care for their own community members. The folks that are in this room are the folks that are going to and want to be working with you to help their communities. They are asking and pleading. We have been asking for years. This is not the first time, and it will not be the last time, until we get the dollars that are necessary for our communities and divest from systems that have been proven time and time again to not only not work, but actively make our communities less safe. Our communities deserve real public safety, not corrupt cops, and that starts with our communities. So please pass the Care First Budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Jonathan Salgado, a UCLA alumni, and I'm here with BSS. I'm here to say that we're all humans, and we should all have the right of freedom. Instead of labeling the youth from low-income communities and stereotyping them as criminals, drug dealers, and to then incarcerating them, we should invest in youth programs, credible messengers, and other alternatives, programs to eliminate incarcerations. Funds should be allocated to mental illness assist programs, youth programs, and the list continues. I demand to allocate these funds to the appropriate departments. It's easy to make a decision when you're not the one who are experiencing the pain and the frustration. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Lisbeth Zambrano Sanchez, and I'm from East Los Angeles. And against a lot of odds and hours at the East LA Library, I got in and just finished my first year at Stanford. Now I'm working, now I'm working as a Californians United for Responsible Budget LA intern with the Reimagine Coalition, because still, we have the same issues of having an oppressive East LA sheriff station where no matter how many captains they have, it will never be safe for my community. And secondly, we have the issue of incarceration that will always fail my community, including youth. Youth that includes my family, my peers from K through 12 education that are victims of the school-to-prison pipeline. I'm here because we deserve better. We deserve investments in diversion through the departments of youth development, and we deserve to be free from LASD violence that happens in the very library I've studied at since I was a kid. To this day, there are hundreds of thousands of kids who are fighting so hard to beat odds, fighting so hard because our youth services are underfunded. I don't want more youth from hoods like mine to have to beat odds to avoid incarceration and be able to go to places like Stanford. We deserve better. I urge you to invest in decarceration, invest in our community services, invest in our libraries right next to sheriff stations. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Kaylee. I am a formerly incarcerated youth, and I'm a community organizer at the Young Women's Freedom Center. I'm here today to explain why all the money funded into probation should be shared or at least put into expensive youth groups like the Young Women's Freedom Center. The budget that we have is an appealing to the needs of the community. The money funded into the community can help the system and path the youth like myself and give them chances to make a change into their lives. We need to invest meaningfully into our community. LA juvenile halls are in a crisis. The whole world is watching, and the board has the opportunity to be creative and make things right. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Leah Perez. I'm part of the Reimagine LA Coalition, and also I work for La Defensa. I'm here on behalf of promoting the Care First vision that we've worked so hard on and the Board of Supervisors has continued to ignore. You've heard from youth today, you've heard from people affected inside, you've also heard from loved ones of people who have lost their lives, and yet still, you have no reaction. The only thing that you can say is articulate to the young child who came up here and spoke about dreaming about a world without jails. I have spoken with people outside of the state and outside of the country who cannot understand how such a large city as Los Angeles operates in such antiquated way. I want to say that I think it's disgraceful for you to continue pouring dollars at the sheriff's department, which completely continues to harm folks, continues to perpetuate violence, and continues to ask as a terrorist organization in surrounding communities of Los Angeles. You need to fire all the individuals that are a part of deputy gangs, and I ask that you just drop care from any of your, anything that you're distributing, because it's very clear that that's not the case. Fully fund our Care First vision, stop pouring money into cops, and hear from the youth that are saying that jails are never the answer. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, supervisors. I'm Lynn Whitaker. I'm president of the Friends of Robinson Gardens, partner of the county for over 40 years. On November 15, 2022, the Board of Supervisors voted to approve the final SEIR operations at Virginia Robinson Gardens. The new SEIR increased our hours from the current nine to four to match those of other parks open 9:00 AM and close at sunset. It increased the number of visitors from 100 to 140 per day and allowed the use of 12 special events per year. To implement these approved changes, additional staffing is needed at the gardens, and this funding request from the Department of Parks and Rec has not been approved for the 2023-2024 budget. We are one of four botanical gardens in the county, the only one on the west side. The new SEIR allows us to provide greater access, education, and enjoyment for the working residents of the county. Without your support, their gardens won't be able to expand our children's Title I science program, and without your support, we will continue to be an underutilized botanical garden. At this point, we're hamstrung. We can't move forward, and I urge you to let Virginia Robinson Gardens begin operating under the 2022 SEIR guidelines. Please approve the requested funding for the necessary staffing. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Michelle Escheri. My AHF colleagues and I are here today to ask for transparency in the process of administering STI screening. A large percentage of STI testing and treating is done in the community-based clinics that are in collaboration with the county. We test, we counsel, we treat. We ask that you, when you fund STIs, that you communicate openly with those embedded in the community who are doing the work. It must be said that STIs are disproportionately impact the LGBTQIA individuals and people of color. These communities are ignored by the system, but we cannot continue to let these populations be ravaged by uncontrolled infections. It is the county's responsibility to solve STIs. Work collaboratively and transparently with us to make an impact on this crisis. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, I'm Ms. Loretta Lorraine. I am an old transgender. I'm, I'm going to be 82 years old next month, and I'm here to help, to look, to make jobs, and also to make things for older people, because I am tired of holding a picture up for somebody cannot be buried. I teamed up with Trans Latina. I went to open the Ms. Loretta Lorraine Foundation, went through Trans Latina, to help older people to be together, to give them a better space, to make things, because I'm a prisoner from a long time ago. I went to jail for being a transgender, and I faced also corrupted cops. Yes, get rid of those corrupted cops, because you don't know what I've seen. I've seen corruption, and corruption is still going on, and it should not be corruption. It should be love, humanity, and also be here for the people, because God, we're the children of God, color, white and black, all of us. I'm Creole and Puerto Rican, and I am here to make some, for humanity, people to make sure, to make jobs for young and to be, take care for the old, and also for people that have mental problems, people that have old timers and diseases, old timers, because they're dying intense, and we need somewhere to help them. And Trans Latina help will do it, and I bless y'all.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Michelle La Cuadra. I live in Supervisor Solis's district, and I'm here with Reimagine LA and many of the orgs fighting for a Care First budget. First, I'm extremely concerned about the $49.6 billion in funding set aside to improve county jails. The solution to the issues and harm our people are facing in jails is not infrastructure funding or by making jails safer, it's solved by decreasing the number of people inside of LA County jails. We should be investing money in closing jails, starting Women's Central Jail, and exploring ways that we can repurpose these facilities to build out spaces and services that will actually help our community. Services for people like trans people, youth, people with substance use disorders, mental health treatment, and many more things. This proposed budget also increases the sheriff's budget despite it already being $4 billion. I don't think they need any money at all, but if you all are so adamant about pulling funding from other areas, then you can use funding from, that's being held there for empty positions or cutting down the salaries of the sheriffs that are making like over $200,000 a year. Our community has put together a Care First budget for you with recommendations provided by community throughout Los Angeles. This is a clear vision by people that have experienced the issues that you all are saying you want to address, so I really urge you to take a closer look at the Care First budget and adopt that in the proposed budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Kent Mendoza. I'm the manager advocacy of the Anti-Racism Coalition, and I'm just here to reiterate what many people have already been stating throughout this whole past few hours around making better investments in the county. I want to remind you, LA County is going to receive $43 billion. You know, we have the largest sheriff's department in the nation, the largest probation department in the nation, the largest district attorney department in the nation. We have some of the biggest law enforcement agencies in the nations, you know, and I think that for so many decades, we've been pouring the money into these agencies. We have learned that what works and what doesn't work from experiences and from, you know, data of how, what works, and I would say, you know, I just want to believe the things that do work, you know. Credible messengers, you know, when I was, one of the guys who spoke earlier today, he did 13 years in prison. I met him when he was 14 and when I was 15 in Challenger Memorial Youth Center. Here we are, I'm about to be 30 next month, he's about to be 29. You know, it's crazy that all these years, you know, we spend them in jails, you know, 13 years of every single year, we invested in him being in prison, in jail, and I didn't even do 13 years, you know, so it's just, it just tells us how much, how much we're failing young people. We're, we're losing our futures to incarceration. We're investing in million-dollar cages and, you know, and it just, it just sucks that we're here standing, and I've been doing this work since nine years. I'm 29. I started this when I was 20, and this is the investment that we need to be making and making leaders that can create change in our communities. So thank you so much and have a great day.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. I'm Maura Greer with Arts for Healing and Justice Network and Layup, a resident in District Two, and I'm speaking on item two. Imagine a world where youth are free to be just youth, not trapped in a cage but a healing center, not trapped in rage but welcomed with love, not stripped from their name and becoming a number but giving them tools to strip pain. Probation spends almost $1 million to incarcerate one youth. Imagine a world where youth seize that money back. Imagine a youth getting a good job as a felon because they did their time. Imagine a world where youth... Imagine a world where youth aren't alone, but accepted into a community. Why do we have to imagine what should be just? Invest in diversion through the Department of Youth Development. Redirect those investings into the incarceration of girls and gender expansive youth. Instead of imagining, you, Board of Supervisors, have the power to make this happen. Redirect those dollars to Heart of YJR. More youth need restorative justice. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
I'm Jay King, District One Resident. The evidence overwhelmingly supports that funding services and programming increases public safety, boosts the economy, and decreases our need for punishment. The only stakeholders who are asking for anything else are only trying to line up the pockets of their employees at the expense of our county. Speaking of lining their pockets, all that probation department money should have already come out of LASD's bloated budget. You need to go ask the Sheriff's Department where their bonus money is. You've committed to the Care First vision, and we need you to fund it. Start by allocating the $900 million that Angelinos overwhelmingly voted for and leverage dollars from CFCI and other local, state, and federal resources. Fund Youth Justice Reimagine by shifting a minimum of $75 million out of probation. We need to invest in our youth. Invest in our youth, not cage them. Lastly, allocate $275 million for mental health treatment beds. Enclose MCJ by March of 2025 with a concrete timeline that reduces a population to less than 8,500. It is fiscally irresponsible to continue to fund punishment over care, and our most vulnerable community members are bearing the brunt of your negligence. You have another undersheriff with a deputy gang tattoo that the new sheriff tried to explain away as a station tattoo, which is exactly what the Civilian Oversight Commission has told you, that deputies have deliberately used to obscure their gang membership. No increased funding for two captains in the East L.A. Station, no funding to LASD until the deputy gangs are eradicated.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Rachel Meisner, and I am an intern at ACLU SoCal and a resident of District Three. At ACLU SoCal, we are intimately aware of what the county and Sheriff's Department need to do to comply with various consent decrees. LASD does not need any more money. Instead, LASD should focus on spending the $4 billion they already have addressing the humanitarian crisis plaguing our carceral system in Los Angeles. LASD continues to use DOJ consent decrees and lawsuits as evidence to why they need more money. The Sheriff's Department suggests they should receive $33.4 million to improve conditions and provide a broader range of mental health services in order to meet the terms of the DOJ settlement. Yet it is suggested correctional health services should only receive $18.9 million. This proves that the money would not be going to support mentally ill incarcerated individuals and instead will provide LASD with yet another opportunity to grossly misuse funding. LASD can find $33.4 million in its already bloated budget. More importantly, the county will not be able to meet the requirements of the DOJ consent decree, particularly those provisions relating to having immediately available HOH and MOH housing without dramatically reducing the number of people with mental illness in the jails. Instead of putting $33.4 million into LASD, the Board of Supervisors should allocate this funding to proven community diversion programs, such as those of the Office of Diversion and Reentry. That is the only path to compliance.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Karen Garcia, and I'm a resident of District Two and a member of the Reimagine L.A. Coalition. I urge the Board to reevaluate the proposed budget. I'm disappointed that the CEO continues to propose increases to the Sheriff's Department's budget. A Care First budget is, one, to divest funding from carceral systems and invest in community-based services. While an additional $16.3 million has been proposed to address homelessness, the Sheriff's Department budget is 36 times the amount of general funds the county gives to homeless and housing services. A budget is a reflection of values, and this budget is not aligned with community needs. We need to see a budget that truly puts care first. That means fully funding CFCI at $900 million, closing MCJ, and divesting from the $4 billion carceral system. We don't need a second captain. We need to increase investments in health, public assistance, housing, mental health, and youth development. The Board declared a local emergency regarding homelessness. We know what solves homelessness. It's simple, housing, tenancy support services, and housing-first solutions. For these to work, investments have to be significant and transformational, and that's not what we're seeing in this proposed budget.
Okay, we need to call some more speakers before we call in the next speaker.
Yes, with the following individuals, please come forward and staff assist you. Shiana J., Samantha Juarez. Sangita Reyesam. Shayla Wilson. Stanley Chapman. Teredu Shakur. Taylor Reed. Tenell Crook. Tommy Butts. Victor Escobar. Whitney Engrian. Zachary Greenfield. Zoe Rosson. Sir Bailey. Elias Davila. Megan Castillo. Jade Green. Alexis Obina. And Robert Gimboa. Please come forward and staff assist you.
Okay, go ahead.
Hello, I'm Lauren Natoli from AIDS Healthcare Foundation. In an effort to be more transparent, Mario Perez met with the STI Crisis Coalition to describe how STI dollars are spent within L.A. County and where they come from. He explained that only a fraction of the general fund goes toward STIs. The bulk of local STI investment, which is $9.9 million out of $43 billion, pays for STI-related staff, and a much smaller but unspecified amount is allocated for STI surveillance and HIV services. A possible explanation for this is that STIs are not seen as a top public health priority. And this must change and quickly before the consequences of our inaction leave us woefully unprepared for another crisis with little to no effective medications, a burnout workforce, and weak infrastructure. Potentially antibiotic-resistant gonorrhea could be the cause of the next crisis. STIs and MPox disproportionately impact LGBTQIA individuals and people of color. It is shameful that the public health system within one of the largest counties in the country is letting these populations suffer. STIs are the county's responsibility. The state and the feds won't bail you out, but CBOs like AHF and the others are willing to tackle this crisis with you. We are your support system. Do not ice us out by hoarding MPox vaccines and cutting off access to the lab. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Melinda Kocani. I'm the Director of Youth Justice at Children's Defense Fund California and also a member of the Los Angeles Youth Uprising Coalition. I want to start with that $169 million to address the crisis in our juvenile and adult carceral systems. That's what your CEO had identified in her second slide. The systems where 25 people have died since the beginning of this year, one of whom was a child, Brian Diaz. And instead of investing nearly $170 million in the healing, stability, freedom of our most vulnerable community members, you're prioritizing their caging. You're prioritizing violence. You're prioritizing harm. I'll say it again, prettier jails do not result in prettier outcomes. This isn't a difficult choice. This is spineless. I heard someone call it bureaucratic suffocation, and that's what this is, wherein you are suffocating those stuck inside, wherein you are suffocating the will of the people, the visions and blueprints that create actual public safety. Put our money where your motions are. The ones where you unanimously supported Youth Justice Reimagine, the ATI recommendations, care first, jails last. You are the reason that probation employees feel like it's okay to call our young people in their control monsters, murderers, and then kill them, their souls, their youth, their joy, their humanity, with complete impunity. You are the reason that we have not freed our future. You are the reason that we have public defenders who consider probation and the sheriff partners and not the problem. Politics for you all has been
Thank you.
who gets what when, and that's clearly prioritizing law enforcement.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Ryan Phillips. I'm here with AIDS Healthcare Foundation. Today, I would like to address rising STI rates and the clear need for increased STI testing and treatment in L.A. County. My organization and I are ready to better serve the community, but we need more collaboration from the county. We cannot continue doing more with less. Despite the recommendation for additional funding to address the STI crisis, CBOs like us, who provide a large proportion of STI testing and treatment, are expected to serve more patients with less money. Yes, federal dollars are sparse. However, requiring CBOs to pay out of pocket or bill insurance for lab costs is unreasonable. This new rule was intended to save the county money, but would just serve as another barrier for patients and providers alike. We ask that the Board and DPH consult with organizations that are on the ground, doing a large majority of the work, before making decisions that will negatively impact our day-to-day operations. If we work together, we can create solutions that benefit all parties. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Ahana. Why did you make this crisis happen? Those kids aren't yours. They shouldn't be in jails. Why did you pay all these kids in jail? The money that people give you and you spend it on jails? It's incredible how bad it is. Why did you make this crisis happen? Those kids aren't yours. They shouldn't be in jails. You really need to stop jails. The money that you get should be for libraries, houses, homeless people. There are so many things you should spend it on and not jails. You need to get the kids out of jails. Jails are just sadness. Jails don't help people. They hurt and don't help unmet needs. You incarcerate not only kids, but adults too. No one belongs in jail. No dollars should be spent on jails. I am mad. When I vote and pay taxes, I will be more mad. And I will never, ever vote for you if you keep spending $460 million on kid jails. That's still way more than you spend on, like, all the jails. Well, it's way less, sorry. And I will tell my friends to do the same. Never, ever vote for you.
Next speaker, please. How are you going to follow that?
Mark Anthony Clayton Johnson, Justice L.A., Reimagine L.A., and Chair of the Civil Brand Commission. You know, when I see that there's a request for $6.6 million for the Office of Constitutional Policing, I can't help but think about what our folks endured under Sheriff McDonald. Sheriff McDonald hired his own constitutional policing advisor. And if you look at what the Federal Monitor reported after he did so, he said, yes, things certainly changed. And what changed is that the sheriff shifted their tactics from the most extreme forms of physical abuse to the most extreme forms of discipline. And what we have here is a culture, a self-aware culture of impunity that will continue to adapt under any condition in which you fund it. That is what we are dealing with. That is why today you have Black women in CRDF telling us that deputies literally tell them, complain all you want, nothing will change. I've had women inside tell me that deputies looked in their file and saw that they had histories of self-harm and said, if you don't like the way things are going in this jail, why don't you just go cut yourself? We have people, I have literally seen deputies take complaint forms out of our hands as commissioners that were given to us by people inside and tear it apart because they didn't want us to have the information. This culture will thrive, certainly under a $4.4 billion budget. It will thrive under any name you give it, including constitutional policing. And the answer is a Care First budget. The answer is moving resources to things that make our people thrive.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Lev Got. I'm with the AIDS Healthcare Foundation. Every single year, the number of STIs increases while funding decreases. This has unfortunately been the trend since the early 2000s. And that was a time when we thought we were going to eradicate syphilis completely. Now that some dollars are coming into the county for STIs, DHSP and the county must use them wisely. It has been five fruitless years since the Board passed a motion to the DPH to reduce STIs. The only thing that has been done since then is cutting access to the county lab, making STI screening even more difficult. Every roadblock you add to the STI screening has a consequence on people of color and LGBTQIA populations who are disproportionately impacted by STIs. In order to stretch the $10 million, you should develop high-quality public health messaging, expand screening, and collaborate openly with the community-based clinics that are providing STI services. Please be transparent and collaborate with your partners who are invested in the health and well-being of vulnerable Angelinos. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Michael Aranda, Brian Villarreal. I'm with the California Conference for Equality and Justice and the Layup Coalition. I'm here to simply uplift the voices of the young people that have already spoken. And I'm here in solidarity with our firmly incarcerated comrades to remind you all, right, that this idea of care that probation has, they're complicit in the killing of young people. So please just don't forget that. I'm here to demand that you fund a DYD, community organizations that are building new leaders, right, in our young people. And as always, fuck probation. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Samantha, and I'm with the Young Women's Freedom Center. Probation spends almost $1 million to incarcerate one youth. That money should be spent to help the youth, not to bring them down. We need to focus on youth-based organizations that will give the support that youth need, like the Young Women's Freedom Center that work with young women who have been system-impacted and provide them with resources to help them. We know that juvenile facilities are still wildly unsafe. Keeping young people inside is putting their lives at risk, and we must free as many youth as possible, as soon as possible. We must protect our youth because youth is our future. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Sangita Reyesam, District One, Hilda Solis, part of Reimagine L.A. Coalition and La Defensa. It's been a little over 24 weeks into this year, putting us into June. That's the month that we commemorate Pride and Juneteenth. And 24 people died in L.A. jails this year alone so far. So now that's about one death per week in L.A. jails, all with over $10 billion allocated towards them. This is unacceptable. A couple days ago, the L.A. Times unsurfaced video footage of unspeakable brutality happening inside L.A. jails. MCJ was set to close like years ago, and voters overwhelmingly passed Measure J back in 2020. What's the holdup? Why is there still more and more money going to more jails and police? You could at least fire LASD gang members so that all their salaries and overtime can go inside to actual community programs and public assistance. It's embarrassing that $6.6 million is going into this, like, Office of Constitutional Policing. When has that kind of police training reform approach ever worked? More and more money going towards cages and cops isn't ensuring care first, preventing the conditions that put people at risk of arrest in jail does. We want to work with the Board of Supervisors who is actually serious about fully funding CFCI and ODR. Crisis prevention and violence prevention on a structural level is not just possible. It was already voted on with Measure J. And we, as constituents, are still fighting for its basic implementation. Clearly, the money is there for it. We need to build a will. Thank you.
Thank you. Do you want to go to the phone now, or you want to take another one? Okay. Welcome.
Thank you. Hello, my name is Shayla Wilson. I am a member of the Justice L.A. Coalition, the Reimagine L.A. Coalition, and employed by La Defensa. Rather than investing in communities, the recommended budget is pushing for billions to go towards the carceral system. This is unacceptable. The recommended budget has co-opted our framing of care first, jails last, while continuing to prioritize investment in policing, surveillance, prosecution, and incarceration, continuing the cycle of oppression, criminalization, and inequality. Divest from probation, divest from sheriffs, invest and uplift our marginalized communities instead. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe we're going to go to someone on the phone. I think there is.
Thank you, ma'am. And our first participant is Dr. Jerry Abraham. Please go ahead.
Hi, this is Dr. Jerry Abraham. I work at Kedron Community Health Center and acute psychiatric hospital in District Two with Supervisor Holly Mitchell. And I also serve at JWCH Wesley in the first district, Hilda Solis, working to serve people experiencing housing insecurity as well as folks that are marginalized and minoritized. We're here today with the STI Coalition of Los Angeles County. We really applaud all of our supervisors. I wanted to add, I wanted to thank Supervisor Horvath and Supervisor Barger as well as Chairperson Han for prioritizing public health within our county budget. We can and need to do more, as you've already heard from many speakers. We are seeing on the front lines, people daily testing positive for HIV. We've seen an increase in monkeypox cases within the county, going from one average a week to now over six averaging a week. So we really have a crisis here. But most importantly, we see the rise of HIV, syphilis, STDs, gonorrhea, chlamydia, and hepatitis in our community, and we can work together to end them. Please help us prioritize that. Please include community-based organizations in the strategy. Department of Public Health, our sister, cannot do it alone. We're really here and thank you all for your support. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we're going to go back in person. Welcome.
Yes, thank you. My name is Stanley Chapman, proud resident of District Three, represented by Lindsay Horvath. Hi, Lindsay. I'm here on behalf of AHF, AIDS Healthcare Foundation, advocating for more money for STD, STI testing. One way to save money on our budget is to put more money into testing prevention that will help reduce a number of will help reduce a number of HIV and STDs and STIs in the community. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Tommy. Hello, my name is Tommy Butts. Hello, my name is Tommy Butts. I'm with AIDS Healthcare Foundation. Last year, a hundred and twenty-three pregnant mothers was diagnosed with syphilis, a hundred and twenty-three. And out of this, there were thirteen stillbirths. I'm sure you agree with me, one stillbirth is too many. There were thirteen unnecessary stillbirths. I march here today on behalf of those thirteen little souls, and I stand here before you today on behalf of those thirteen little souls unnecessarily lost. More funding for STIs and more information in STIs is needed, and it's needed now. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Whitney Andron Cordova. I'm Vice President of Public Health Programs for AHF and a resident of the Fourth District. And we're here today to support the public health budget item two B, Number Four, to support STI work in L.A. County. But I also want to thank you for putting more money into the budget for this. These increases are very important, and I also want to really thank you for acknowledging our advocates that have been here working to be heard. The language in the budget item does concern me, however, given that it kind of, it looks like it prioritizes infrastructure development. And I'd really hope that this money really goes to community-based organizations, goes out to the community, and doesn't just really support the DHSP infrastructure. Community organizations have been meeting with Dr. Ferrer, and we've had some success in starting that conversation. I really want to thank her and thank the department for having those meetings and hope that what that really yields is us being able to work together to put things on the ground directly. We must take a look. I have to let you know that it wasn't five cases that we've identified, it was six. While we were sitting here, we got the report of another sixth case of monkeypox that we have had, too, just this weekend. So it is something that greatly concerns us, and we want to make sure that we're addressing it. Thank you all for your support.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Okay, I want to start off by saying my name is Tahida Shakur. Tahida Shakur. Thank you. Hi, my name is Tahida Shakur. I'm an organizer with U. Justice Coalition. I'm here today to demand that y'all reallocate at least seventy-five million dollars to the Department of Youth Development and not probation. Every young person deserves to live in a city that loves them. My dad spent sixteen years in prison, but spent most of his teen years in and out of camps. Not one time during his arrest as a young person did probation or police officers see him as a child or even human. My dad stole because he was hungry. The Youth Development Department, had it been created years ago, which it should have been, could have seen my dad as a hungry child, not the monster the system paints him to be. Had he had the resources, he wouldn't have gone to prison. Murder, murder is illegal, but y'all have, y'all all have allowed Brian Diaz to die because you have chosen to invest in a system that keeps killing people. Ms. Horton spoke to you all fourteen years ago, talking about the deaths that have happened and continue happening inside. Give seventy-five million dollars to the Department of Youth Development and invest in care-first, jails never. There are lives at stake. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Tenel Crook. On May the thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, my son was number fifteen that died in Men Central Jail. My son was only nineteen years old. I don't know what it's going to take for you guys to close that jail. How many people actually has to die? Why do you guys keep funding cops, bad cops, that's killing people? I know some resources or something else could be done to figure out how could this be stopped? I just don't understand, how can you guys keep funding something that no good is coming out of it? When my son died, then no one never come in his cell to clean it. The next inmate that they took in my son's cell, he had a blanket with my son's blood still on there. I like to have, spend the rest of my time for moment of silence for Cameron Lee Nettles.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Say his name. Cameron Lee Nettles. Hello, Board of Supervisors. My name is Megan Castillo, and I am the Coalition Coordinator for the Reimagine L.A. Coalition and the Policy and Advocacy Manager at La Defensa, a resident of District Two and a Commissioner for the Care-First Community Investment Advisory Body. In Los Angeles County, the jail budget has roughly increased forty-four percent since 2011. The number of L.A.S.D. employees has also increased. The jail population, however, has decreased by five percent during that same period. I know each of you saw the videos, and I'm sure you all saw the surveillance clips that were released by the L.A. Times this week about the violence taking place inside the jails. The jail system is a horrendous place, and we know that L.A.S.D. cannot staff its way out of the horrid reality. Folks are dying in those violent halls under your watch. What the community needs is care, not cages. The community needs investment in mental health workforces, as well as clinicians and alternatives to community crisis response teams. A care-first approach requires divestment from the county's institutions that are most responsible for harming and incarcerating our communities. A continued nearly five billion dollars in allocation towards sheriff and probation departments does not demonstrate a commitment to reimagining justice and a care-first vision. As stated time and time again, care-first means putting care first and community first. Close Men Central Jail and fully fund care-first community investment. Thank you.
Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Janet Asante. I'm with the Justice L.A. Coalition, and I'm in Holly Mitchell's district. I just want to say something that'll make you guys care, like really care where you put the money where your mouth is. So I'll start by saying it's nonsensical to put additional six point six million towards the Sheriff's Department for the Office of Constitutional Policing. There's absolutely no evidence that this money is going to eradicate deputy gangs, make our communities safer, or do anything but put more money towards a department that plagues people and kills people. But there is an abundance of evidence of mental health care, housing, and pre-trial services, and everything outlined in the ATI report will work. Fund that. Over two hundred officers make over two hundred K in overtime. Han, on March first on last year, you said, we certainly don't want folks to pass away while they're in our custody. That's happening. Barger, on six twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-one, you said, make no mistake, we all agree that M.C.J. should be closed. Keeping it open is not effective, a long-term solution for L.A. County. Solis, this jail is in your district. You said, we have the data, the charts, the reports, the recommendations, and analysis to move forward, and it is high time we roll up our sleeves and get it done. That was two years ago. Roll up your sleeves. Okay? Mitchell said in two thousand and twenty-one, regardless of who has what authority, the Board is ultimately responsible for getting this right. You all are responsible. This blood is on your hands. Who will die next? Do we need a billboard that says, the L.A. County Board of Supervisors funds death? Because that's what you do.
Next speaker, please. I'm going to ask the audience again to refrain from clapping. Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Zachary Greenfield, and I'm with the AIDS Healthcare Foundation. We marched today and at the previous Board of Supervisors meeting for attention to STIs, and we will march again if a transparent collaborative plan for STIs is not put in place. AHF is not going to back down from our urgency for quality STI screening, treatment, and care. There were two point five million STIs in the U.S. in 2021, and the number has risen every single year for the past six years. In L.A. County, there were nine thousand three hundred and nine cases of syphilis and twenty-eight thousand four hundred and sixty-five cases of gonorrhea. That's only 2021. STIs are not going to waver. We must tackle the issue directly with funding, eye-catching public health messaging, and collaboration with community stakeholders and community-based organizations. STIs are the responsibility of the county. You need to address this directly and not wait on resources from federal and state sources. We are ready to work together on STIs. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Cameron Lee Nettles. Brian Diaz. Redd and Kubas. Many, many, many more names I wish I could bring into this space. George Floyd. Trayvon Martin. I'm here to stand for truth. I'm here to stand for community, and I'm wondering if you all are able to do that as well. There's nothing more I could say. It's all been said, so I'm going to uplift what I heard. Armon and Sahana, fund hopes and dreams. Jails are sadness. Millie, thank you for raising anti-racist children. Julio, welcome home. I never received help or healing inside, it was living in fear. Fund healing and love for youth. Maura, imagine that youth are accepted and that they belong in the community. You can make this possible. Healthcare workers, you deserve better, and so do the people who are forced to reside in that decrepit environment without going home at night. Reimagine L.A., stop funding violence, stop funding racism. Fund equity, care first. Mark Anthony, the power structure will continue to shift to sustain its power, and it's on you to interrupt this cycle of harm. Stop funding racism. Fund justice. Bring youth home.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Hello. Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Elias Davila, and I am part of the Anti-Racism Coalition, and I'm here to speak up on the funding. I believe that you guys should put the funding into credible messengers that actually help the youth. There's a lot of probation officers that abuse their power inside the jails and don't care about these children. I believe credible messengers is a good, is a good thing for these youth because these credible messengers are coming out of jail and actually trying to support these youth not to do the mistakes they did, you know? So they actually, hearing from somebody from their experience, it's not a probation officer that's just trying to put them inside the cage or just, you know, abusing their power inside the, inside the jails. So I believe you guys should really put more funding into organizations like ARC, Homeboys Industry, you know, that actually care for our youth and actually is building resources for us, you know, and job skills and schools, you know, and helping us actually get more resources. So hopefully you guys do the right decision and, you know, and stop this, all this madness that's going on, you know, and actually invest in our youth. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
My name is Jade Green. I live in District Two, District Two, Crenshaw District, Holly Mitchell. The Board made a commitment to prioritize the care-first budget two years ago. And yet, we've watched the Board fall short on your promise to fully invest in community-based programs and alternatives to incarceration over and over again. Are you not listening? Or is it that you just don't care? Where you put and spend your money lets me know what you care most about. Eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year to incarcerate one youth? Is that what you care about? Because that's what it looks like in the world is watching. Move at least seventy-five million dollars to the Department of Youth Development instead of probation that is failing our youth. It's not working. It's not working. People are dying in there. You need to move this money where it reflects the needs and the values of our community, the communities that you serve and that you have a responsibility to do so. Listen to the people that you serve and what they care about. Care first, not cages. Or when it's time for y'all to run again, the people will remember that you did not care about us or our youth first.
Next speaker, please.
Hello, my name is Justin Andrew Marks. I serve as the Co-Executive Director of the Youth Justice Coalition. Chair Han, I live in your district. What will be your legacy? What will be your legacy? Will you be the board that continues to rubber-stamp CEO's recommendation to continue to fund There is no progress without struggle. It will not be easy, but if you heard anything today, please be inspired to step up, as someone mentioned, to roll up your sleeves, to do the work to shut down Men Central Jail, to do the work to invest in alternatives to incarceration for young people. A brother from ARC spoke earlier, I believe their founder Greg Boyle once said that nothing stops a bullet like the job. The most dangerous place for a young person in Los Angeles County is in Silmar Juvenile Hall, is in Central Juvenile Hall. The biggest gang in Los Angeles don't wear red or blue, they wear khaki and green. Stop funding our oppression, stop funding the murder, invest in alternatives. We're demanding that you cut the two hundred and forty-seven vacant excess probation positions. No extra six point six million dollars for probation salaries. Allocate at least seventy-five million dollars towards the Department of Youth Development. Instead, the alternatives are there, but there will be no progress without struggle. In the name of John Horton, in the name of Brian Diaz, I yield my time for a moment of silence.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Next speaker, please.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair and Board of Supervisors, and thanks to all the advocates who've spoken here today. Happy Pride. My name is Robert Gamboa, he/him/his pronouns, and I'm the Policy Advocacy Manager for the Los Angeles LGBT Center, speaking today in support of the 10 million funding for STI services. Pre-COVID, L.A. County was already facing surging rates of STIs, especially as resources were redirected to address that public health emergency. Community-based organizations had to bear the brunt of costs such as with public health labs. Since COVID, the continued detrimental impacts of STIs affecting our communities, mostly communities of color, low income, and LGBTQ-plus community members, has only grown worse. 10 million is not nearly enough. We needed 30 million in 2018 just to break the ice on the issues, but it is a starting point. We hope that we see that 10 million number increase significantly year after year as the STI crisis rises to its own public health emergency, and we should respond as such. We look forward to collaboration between the county and community-based organizations so that we might even begin syndemic planning and have a more comprehensive and complete solution as we work to eliminate all of these epidemics, including HIV. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Hi, my name is Alexis Obina from California Youth Connection. First off, hi, Holly Mitchell. Second, as I was waiting to speak, I met Kathy, who works for you all. And if you all are going to have customer service clerks, please make sure they have customer service. I wanted to get back to the reason why I'm here. Catherine Barger, I am from your Fifth District, Antelope Valley. I did also serve as one of your youth, I was the youth worker, and I shadowed you about 10 years ago. And you're a great person, but how you oversee Antelope Valley has been really disheartening. And I feel like when I heard the CEO was planning on giving probation six point six million dollars for salaries with the same number of positions, I was appalled. And as a young foster youth who was placed in Antelope Valley, DCFS, I struggled. Let me repeat that. I struggled to have people hear my story, to have people give me simple things that I needed. And so I was faced with many different social workers and social workers who had racist intentions, and I had, they had staff managers who didn't care or couldn't fire their racist staff because there was and still is a shortage. I don't think pumping money into these racist systems will help the communities that need it the most, and that's why I'm in strong support and urge the Board of Supervisors to reevaluate and support the fiscal year 2023 budget. Thank you, guys. Have a great day.
Thank you. Next speaker, please.
Good afternoon. My name is Sir James Bailey, Layup Information Project, most humbly, optimistically, and willingly Christ-anointed Jesus salvation. I think what I'm saying also, the people in purple, white, and red would stand for also. One out of three vacant probation positions, they said it's rat-infested, they said it breeds burnout. That's why we say, shut it down. That's why we say, close it down. One hundred and seventeen million versus sixteen million. 117 million versus 16 million. That's 101 million more to fix one cage, Los Pedrinos, that's already closed down compared to fixing homelessness. In his book, Policing a Classless Society, Sidney Herring cites several mechanisms that serve to maintain the obedience of police during strikes. And I bring that up because I saw so many union people. These include racism and ethnic division, disdain for unskilled and low-wage workers, organizational norms and discipline, law and order ideology, criminalization of strike activity, and incentives, such as overtime pay and bonuses. First time in L.A. history, an all-woman board. Women, women, nurture by nature, care by culture. Yes, nurturing caregivers. How could we give overtime and incentives to what L.A., the newspaper says, are gangs? That we learn rest in power, Harry Belafonte, but learn through the work?
Thank you. Thank you for your remarks. Next speaker, please.
Thank you, Sir Bailey, for your words. Good afternoon, Board of Supervisors. My name is Jewe Royball Castle. My traditional name is Oyate Wewa Wush Wewa. My adult name is Sulu Anwa. I was born to the Osage, to the Absentee Shawnee, to the Muskogee Creek people. And I was born at Small Boy Camp in Alberta, Canada. I thank you for doing the land acknowledgement. I am here with the Reimagine L.A. Coalition, and I am an organizer with the California Native Vote Project for Tongva Territory. I am not as articulate as those children who spoke earlier. I'm someone who carries a GED because of the school-to-prison pipeline. I come from a system-impacted background, and my children have been raised with system-impacted parents who have encountered more brutality at the hands of the people who were sworn to protect and serve. But I ask you, protect and serve who? While the father of my children was incarcerated on an 18-year bid, his cage was opened, and he is now blind in one eye, and he walks with a cane. He is one of the lucky ones because he made it home to hug his children. Even if we're not friends, he's still the father of my children, and he didn't deserve to die in custody, nor does anybody else. Did you know that the introduction to California Youth Authority prisons?
Thank you. Your time has expired.
Is to give psych meds to our community members when they hit processing.
Thank you. Your time has expired. Do we have another speaker?
There are no other speakers, Madam Chair.
Okay. Do we have any other speakers on the line?
No other speakers on the line.
Okay. Thank you to all of our public speakers today, and that will conclude our public comments. We will now move to the Board members to make comments and ask questions on Ms. Davenport's presentation today. So we're going to start with Supervisor Horvath, followed by Supervisors Barger, then Solis, then Mitchell, and finishing with myself. Ms. Horvath.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I first want to thank all who spoke today. I'm impressed by your knowledge. I am moved by your passion, and I am grateful for your determination for change. I want to thank our staff who worked on the budget as well and all who will continue to work on it. I know our budget is constricted in many ways. It can be difficult to raise new revenues, as was highlighted in the presentation. And for these reasons, I would encourage our budget staff to look carefully at each department on a routine basis for efficiencies. This will obviously be important as we move forward with a number of critical initiatives while also having limited revenue growth. And I hope that we take this next period of time as we move towards supplemental budget to address many of the comments that we've heard today. If we're to help our unhoused prevent more homelessness, reform our jails and juvenile halls, address climate change, and provide necessary physical and mental health care to our constituents, we will need to take a closer look at our budget and how we allocate our resources. This will include examining our existing spending, our new spending, and where our employees are best utilized as we know that now more than 114,000 of them are in our ranks. We know our staff is a great resource, can be a great resource to providing the care and support that our community members came out and asked for today. We have some significant challenges and large expenditures in our future. And in order to balance our budget while still providing necessary services to our constituents, we need to take a look at all of our expenditures. The realities we face are challenging and, in some cases, embarrassing and require action that is not the status quo. So I want to focus on a few areas with questions and comments, and also then hear from my colleagues. First, in the area of sustainability and climate change, which I believe is an existential threat and I think requires our attention. I'm thankful that we'll be making one-time investments to stand up our county's sustainability. But we need to make ongoing investments as well, including to fund our County Resilience Initiative and Officer. I would ask that additional one-time and ongoing funding be included in our supplemental budget to address our sustainability and resilience programs and goals. And I'd like the CEO to articulate, if she can, a bit about how we're working to achieve that at this stage and what the next step will be in supplemental.
Thank you for that, Supervisor. So we would look at that request, and there may already, excuse me, be a request for permanent funding from the Executive Office where the Chief Sustainability Office sits. We would evaluate that request along with the other many pending requests that we would have to consider at the time of the supplemental budget phase and look and see what our revenues are to see if there is an ability to fund, to establish the funding for and fund the Climate Resiliency Officer position.
Okay. So we'll need to work on that in the next few months, too, in order for the supplemental budget to be able to address that, is what I'm hearing. The state of emergency that we're currently experiencing on homelessness requires us to act differently in the face of this emergency. The prevention of homelessness is also a critical component of addressing the homelessness crisis we're facing. I appreciate the report back on Stay Housed L.A. and the carryover funding that will be used for the program in the upcoming fiscal year. But we also need to identify a permanent source of funding for that program so it is sufficient. I would also like our CEO's office in the department to continue to examine what a right-to-counsel program would look like, what the financial impacts to the county will be. And I'd like to more clearly outline exactly what the budget at this stage is doing to address the state of emergency that is homelessness and what we can expect in the next few months to be reflected in the supplemental budget, what we're working towards in those months as well on the state of emergency issue.
Thank you, Supervisor. So under the state of emergency, let me start off with what I think is one of the many important components, which is the Hiring Within CEO Homeless Initiative, since we are standing up a unit called the Municipal Relations Unit. So we have the departments that are out doing a service delivery, mental health, health services, SAPC. And then we have the CEO's office, who's also working with Lawson, coordinating funding. But the intent of that unit is to actually go out and work with all of the cities and to focus on our unincorporated areas and to really double down on encampment resolution. To that end, your Board previously approved funding for a staffing expansion. In this budget phase, there are 26 positions that are being added to the Homeless Initiative. We have either filled or in the process of filling 18 of those positions. That's about 69%. We have 33 folks that are in queue that we are interviewing. In terms of moving forward, and I'm really talking here about service expansion, we are going to have to work with our partners to identify funding. Some of it from within the existing Measure H budget, and then some from what we call, basically, our Measure H reserve to fund the encampment resolution piece. The reason why I'm making that distinction is when the Board adopted the emergency declaration, it was administrative in nature. So it's like, let's do all the things we need to do to hire faster, contract faster, procure faster. Now that those processes are underway, we need to find funding to help work with cities on the encampment resolution. We do have some pools of funding that are already established, but we think as cities watch other cities partner better with the county and that we are offering funding to those cities, that more cities will actually come and want to participate.
Okay. As it relates to many of the health needs that were identified, I want to start by acknowledging I'm very pleased to see additional funding dedicated to fight the STI epidemic that we are facing. As we know, the STI rates are continuing to rise not only here in Los Angeles County but across the state and the country. We know that they disproportionately impact already underserved and marginalized communities, particularly LGBTQ+, Black communities, Asian Pacific Islander, Indigenous people, Latinx populations. And so we not only need to address that through what is budgeted, but also use this time between now and supplemental budget to see how we can increase and expand outreach and education as well as looking at addressing the concerns that were raised about how we can help with the insurance coverage issue that some providers are running into. I know that there are providers that we work with, community-based organizations, and partners in this space who are able to navigate the paperwork as it relates to insurance coverage and funding. So what are the plans? What can we expect in these next few months now that there is additional funding? What will we see different as it relates to this issue?
Thank you, Supervisor. So we would actually have to work with public health on that. Public health is in a driver's seat on the program and the implementation delivery. My understanding is that the issue, on the issue of insurance, this is not a new issue, that it has been bubbling for quite a while. But we can work with DPH to identify if there are efficiencies to be had. And there, I want to point out, although it's not in this budget phase, DPH did also receive a $4 million grant for syphilis prevention, which is in the final changes budget document. And so while they are rolling out those programs, we can work with them to see, you know, if there is a solution to the insurance process. Can it be streamlined, made less laborious, et cetera?
Even if there are lessons learned from our community providers who are able to navigate it, that we're able to share, I think that's, you know, that's even an easy start. And so, you know, making progress in this area, clearly there are providers who are interested in helping to continue to provide care. If we're able to provide that assistance and bridge that gap, I think that would go a long way. As it relates to probation, as we know, we, there are state requirements, both because of recent BSCC action as well as other pending matters that relate to the county's probation department that require us to take certain actions legally. We heard today certainly a clarion call to invest in D Y D unconditionally. I know that's something that we face challenges with because of state requirements requiring that the chief probation officer in the probation department be entrusted with our justice-involved youth in many cases. And we need changes to state statute, which we need to make marked progress in terms of our advocacy from the county to ask for that help. Otherwise, it's not going to change. So can you talk a little bit about why we're making the investments that currently are being made in D Y D and why we are on the plan that we are on with probation as it is today instead of following prescriptively the Youth Justice Reimagined Plan that has been presented by community?
Absolutely. So a couple of things. Specifically with the proposed recommendations that are in the final changes Board letter, one of the things that you will note, if you look at the attachment, Attachment 1, that talks about the probation's budget, you'll see that probation's overall budget actually has decreased. Sorry. Not by a whole lot, but it is not necessarily on this onward, this upward trajectory. The funding that you heard me discuss earlier, the 117 million, is actually not new funding. It's funding that has been allocated to various, for example, capital projects for other probation facilities. When those capital projects are completed, those funds normally would drop to what we call fund balance. Instead, what we did this year, because we knew that we were going to need these funds to help address the issues at Los Pedrinos, is we swept all of those funds, and we're putting them into, basically, a Los Pedrinos capital project. So it is not the case by adopting that recommendation today that the Board is allocating a new $117 million in funding. It was money that was already within the probation's budget. On the issue of the Youth Justice Reimagined Report that I believe was done by the Burns Institute, as we understand it, there was a lot of work put into that report. And there was a lot of refinement that was needed. So, for example, in the report, there were recommendations to just eliminate all of these vacant positions from the probation department. One of the things that's important to differentiate, and this isn't just for probation, but some of those positions are considered cost reimbursement. That's how they're funded. So if you take away the position and not doing the work within the probation department, then you don't get the funding. That was one of the issues that surfaced as we started to do an analysis on how that report could be implemented. I'll just give a, I'll just give one other example. When we work with county council to do the legal analysis, as you correctly pointed out, the statutory regulations are of such a nature that the work either has to be done by a probation officer, an employee holding that title, or has to be done in an organizational entity that is supervised by a chief probation officer. And I think you spoke to the need And I think you spoke to the need to continue advocacy in that area to get the law changed. And so, it is not for lack of trying or effort that we are, have not moved on some of the, or on all of the recommendations from that report. And some of them, we have done. We have established a Department of Youth Development. They have staffed up. They are doing programming. They are doing the Credible Messenger contracting now, and actually for the probation department. But this is one of those things Supervisor, I believe it is, it is a, a large shift. And I understand that there is a need and an urgency for us to move the needle so that we don't, so that this does not become deprioritized. But there are also issues that are not within our control that we need to have resolved so that we can move forward on implementing the rest of the Youth Justice Reimagined vision.
Well, I would say, in, in response to that, between now and supplemental budget, I think we need, I know that we have a plan as it relates to responding to BSCC, and I would just ask that we work on a clear plan of action as it relates to legislative advocacy, increasing resources to DYD, and shutting down the facilities that not only the BSCC has called for, but the facilities that we have determined. I know on our last agenda, there was a facility that we shut down and transferred ownership of that property and are in the process of transferring ownership of that property. So, we are making good on what those commitments are. And I think that the way that we can earn trust back in terms of progress on this issue is also having that plan not only outlined with action steps, but timelines so we can manage expectations and have a clear conversation about what our next steps are. As it relates to the Sheriff's Department, I know that we heard a lot of comments today, especially with regard to, and referencing past votes to close Men's Central Jail, the vote which was taken in 2018. And I know that our, under our previous sheriff, we have seen this budget just bleed with lack of accountability as it relates to that department. We are looking at measures to try and institute accountability, and I think that it is also fair to say that some small steps will not create the overall culture shift without further kinds of accountability. And so, I know that we need to properly invest in pre-trial, in actually investing in depopulation of Men's Central Jail, as is required by the terms of the consent decree, and also to make sure that we are standing up the ODR beds, the mental health supports, and the infrastructure that is needed to be able to decarcerate. So, can you talk about what we're doing at this stage of the budget to do those things? What relationship J-Cod has to that and what we would expect in terms of the next three months between now and supplemental budget, please?
Thank you Supervisor. So, as I talked about earlier on one of my slides, it was page two or four, we talked about this $29.9 million to move folks into non-carceral, community-based beds. So, that's funding for ODNR to actually handle inmates who are being discharged, who would be considered under the P3, P4, this descriptor that is, that is used to identify levels of acuity. So, that work is going forward. ODNR probably needs to enter into some contracts, enter into some agreements. I'm not sure if they're going to push the money out through working in partnership with DMH, but it certainly is an ODNR handle once the, once the funding is in place. In addition to that, we would interpret the work that ODNR is doing would be implicated by the emergency declaration, to the extent that these folks would, it is very unlikely that upon discharge, that they would be able to be fully functioning and, you know, have housing that's readily available. So, we will of course support the ODNR's efforts for any hiring that they needed to We talked also about some of the other things that are happening inside the jail, that 52 million that I talked about earlier. Everything ranging from standing up a psychiatric inpatient unit to offering programming, offering out-of-sale, unstructured time, all of these things are, I think they're twofold. There are things that we should have been doing a long time ago, and things that are now at the forefront of the mind of, you know, the monitors for DLJ, for the consent decree. So, this funding is being allocated, most of that funding, if not all of it, I believe, is going to Department of Health Services, and so they would need to move forward with that work and to implement. And then I forgot the third part of the question, and my answer is so long.
Well, I guess I would just say, between now and supplemental budget, you know, we, it is clear that we have, as this board, taken action to stand up the P3, P4 beds. I know there was a previous motion to invest further in ODR. We are investing in this infrastructure, and we need those allocated investments and directed investments to become reality. It is, you know, one thing to pass a motion, this board is giving direction, but until the implementation happens, we cannot move forward. And we have, as this board, not only created, authored motions, passed and developed expectations in the community, but we've also invested our time and direction in the relevant department heads, working together to address the terms of the consent decree. They are acting under the direction of your office to come into compliance with those terms, and we need a timeline because we're being asked for one. So, I would say between now and supplemental budget, we need accountability in that regard as well. Legislative change in the areas, and legislative change in advocacy where the areas are related to state requirements, so we can fully realize the vision that this county has outlined in the plans that have been directed, that we fully have a clear plan about what depopulation and shutdown of Men's Central Jail looks like on a clear timeline, and what supports will be stood up on a timeline. So, we are creating actual expectations for the direction that this board has already given, and that we implement it on a timeline that we're holding ourselves accountable to. We are being asked to do that so, already, so this isn't new news, it isn't new direction, but the accountability piece is what's been missing. And so, we have to take that seriously, and my, my request between now and supplemental budget is to get that clearer plan and make sure that the investments are being made in the supports that we need to take that action. Otherwise, we're going to keep having this conversation that is difficult, it's heartbreaking, and it's embarrassing for us to be in. And so, we have to do something different in order to get a different result. So, I, I would just ask that that be the path that we put ourselves on. Two issues that were not highlighted in your presentation, but did come up in public comment that I also wanted to highlight, were investment in food security and greater access to green space and recreation facilities that exist in the county. I know that we are constrained by, by our budget, and we'll be looking between now and supplemental, so if we can include those areas as we're looking at where, where we have resources going forward, I would add that those are critical community supports that we heard advocacy for today, and I think would go a long way to providing some of the, some of the assistance that people are looking for. Thank you.
So, I would just say on the issue of parks, there was, Parks did a very robust needs assessment many years ago. There is a plan. They are bringing on parks. We have a couple scheduled to open this year and then next year. One of the challenges, it's either Measure A or Prop A for us, is that the measure funded the parks, but not the staffing. So, we're always a little bit behind in trying to get them staffed up. We did put staffing in a budget this year for a few parks that we know that are slated to open in fiscal year 2324, and we'll continue to look at that.
Thank you, Ms. Berger.
Thank you. I also would like to send my thanks to you, Fesia, as well as Joe Nikita and the CEO of Budget Team under the leadership of Matt McGowan. I would also like to thank the department leaders for their partnership and working with the CEO and our board to ensure that we are able to fill their respective missions while looking for opportunities to improve and enhance services and programs for the residents of Los Angeles County. I continue to share your concerns, Fesia, about our fiscal outlook and the potential economic issues on the horizon, and I think this budget reflects that. And I really appreciated the, the little clip that you had in terms of the October, because people do think by adopting it, you know, today, that it's not very fluid, but in fact it is, because we have some unknowns, even people filing their tax returns. The states made that very clear in terms of what that's going to look like, so we can't budget unless we know what we're going to get. In that regard, I'm also grateful to see the CEO present reasonable mid-year budget adjustments for our current fiscal year and thoughtful additions in the final changes the year ahead. The budget recommendations include much-needed staffing and resources that are essential for the county jails in order to reflect, really, even though I take issue with saying that we're not care-first, we are care-first. And for those that cannot be diverted, I argue and I agree, we are not providing quality care currently in our jails for those individuals that are of greatest need. And I think that it is inconscionable, and I know, I agree wholeheartedly with what you said Supervisor Horvath, in terms of responsibility we have. And I think it's, it's vital that we, as a board, own up to the fact that it's not just about bricks and mortar, it's also about personnel. So, I hear loud and clear from the individuals that came down from SEI, you need to talk about what's going on on the correctional health side, because at the end of the day, they're charged with helping the most vulnerable with the greatest need. And I want to make sure that we give them everything possible, and that includes ample staffing in order to make sure that they are doing their job. I really want to emphasize that I do not feel we can continue to manage and maintain a failing system and a deteriorating structure. So, again, I appreciate you said, which is why when the advocates were coming up, I said, what is our plan? Because before you were elected, this board unanimously agreed that we needed to move forward to do something, and we've got to look at just not Men's Central, but as Supervisor Solis said, our system as a whole, in terms of how we are going about doing this. And I look forward to having that discussion. As a county system, as a county jail system and the largest provider of mental health services in the nation, we must focus on improving the correctional health services we provide for those that are in our care. I do appreciate the 41 new positions and 52 million that will provide mental health services for people in custody, as well as the additional 30 million to help move individuals with mental health conditions into community care treatment. But I want to say something that I think is important to note, and I've talked to people that are, that are working on the diversion side, we have to build a system that has not been built. And how much money, Fesia, is currently in, as we call it Measure J, that has been unspent to the, to date?
The total, the allocation for Measure J Care First CI in this budget phase was total 486 million. To date, the board has allocated about 676 million, some of that was ARPA dollars, and I believe that the figure that's going to be rolled over is about 187, about 100, between 180 to 190 million dollars.
I think that's important to note, and I think it's important that we work with our community-based partners, make sure we do this the right way, and that is to build a system that is going to support diversion long-term. So, make no mistake, I know there are those that are disappointed with there's not more money, but there is ample money right now to begin to continue to build that momentum toward building a system that really will reflect the, the opportunities for us to have a care first, provide before they get into our system, services in the community, and that includes schools. That includes across the board, early intervention, which I wholeheartedly support, and I'm hoping that next, you know, in October, that dollar amount is considerably less, that we are in fact building a better system to reflect the need out in the communities. Mental health is something that I feel is very important, and I just want to, you know, when I first was elected, my first action at the board was to expand the mental evaluation teams. So, I am very happy to see that the Department of Mental Health is expanding the clinicians they dedicated to these teams. We've seen that when the mental evaluation team comes in contact, less than 1% are taken to jail. They are diverted to programs in the community, de-escalation, and they are trained. And so, I'm excited, and I hope that, that expands and actually is rolled out. I know I've got cities in my district that would love to have the mental evaluation teams embedded in their police force because they would see better outcomes across the board. I'd also like to take a moment to acknowledge the ongoing challenges facing the Department of Children and Family Services, not the least of which is the lack of placements as highly, as recently highlighted, highlighted in the news. The family of Gabriel Fernandez recently commemorated the 10-year anniversary of his tragic death at the hands of his mother and her boyfriend in the Antelope Valley. I've continued to advocate loudly for my communities in the Antelope Valley, who are sometimes disadvantaged by the lack of adequate county staffing and services in the more rural vision, region. I am pleased to see the allocation of funds to support 30 new positions for DCFS in the Antelope Valley. These staffed resources will be critically important to help children and families in the North County. Thank you, Fesia, and to all of your team for recognizing this, the importance of this and for your support in these efforts. Now, and also for Brandon, of course, the Director of Children and Family Services, for bringing it forward. Now, I'd like to take a moment to address the dire homelessness crisis we are facing. Under the leadership of Supervisor Horvath, the county declared homelessness a local emergency, and we are addressing hiring and supportive services with the kind of fervor and urgency that is necessary in a crisis situation. I co-authored this emergency declaration so the county can fully maximize our resources to give programs and services to people who are homeless as efficiently and quickly as possible, to bring them inside on a pathway to permanent housing. As part of this urgency, we have delegated authority to the CEO to immediately bring on new positions that are critical in implementing and overseeing the people experiencing homelessness missions, which were approved by this board. These three missions are, one, encampment resolution, second, housing, and third, mental health and substance abuse disorder services. I want to thank the Homeless Initiative team for their work on developing these programs. I know it's taken a lot of effort upfront to map out the positions and identify the right candidates, but I'm happy to learn that we are already beginning to hire. For example, I'm very impressed with the team that's been assembled thus far to lead our outreach and community engagement programs. Carter, is it Hughley? I want to make sure I say it, Hughley, and Oni Williams, Onay, Onay Williams, have been instrumental in working with the cities I represent in the Fifth District, and has been making a major impact. And I'm sure my colleagues, if you haven't heard from your cities, I can tell you that my cities feel that it's restoring trust and collaboration with our city partners. So, I want to thank you for the team that you've sent out. I'm also impressed by the partnership we've had in developing with the City of Los Angeles, especially assisting Mayor Bass in executing Inside Safe protocols. With our new CEO HI position supporting the partnership with the City of LA on Inside Safe encampment resolution, I've seen the impact it's had so far. The reports have stated there are already more than 20 joint operations and at least 1,200 people brought safely indoors with the help of county-funded multidisciplinary teams, regional outreach coordination, mental health outreach and mobile engagement teams, and health services mobile clinic supports. Comprehensive, holistic approach to addressing those that are suffering on our streets. That is good news, but make no mistake, and I think you heard it Supervisor Horvath, that is just the start. We've got to do this truly with a sense of urgency moving forward. Additionally, the county partnerships extend beyond the CEO Homeless Initiative. I've learned that public works and the host teams have been ensuring that proper protocols are being followed during the voluntary removal of personal property from county-maintained flood-control district properties. This is encouraging, and I want to thank all the county staff engaged with our contracted and contracted partners for connecting Inside Safe participants to the benefits, substance abuse services, and mental health clinic services they need. I'd especially like to thank the outreach and administrative staff deployed by CEO HI for continuing to coordinate this work through, through daily calls, routine communications with departments and board offices, and constant partnership with the LA Mayor's Office. The successful partnership on Inside Safe resolutions has, has me incredibly optimistic about our Own Pathway Home program, which I understand will be launching in the coming weeks, and which will continue to support encampment resolution county-wide, a county-wide approach. This will be critical as we continue to collaborate with our 88 cities, council of governments, and unincorporated partners to prioritize makeshift and RV encampments in their communities for comprehensive, person-centered, housing-focused resolution. This board will continue to do all it can to create resources for our departments to leverage existing and new funding so that we can infuse credible offers in interim housing, and I emphasize credible offers in interim housing, including motel-based, non-congregate options, and clear pathways to permanent housing stability into our outreach and our engagement. I know there's been, there has to be significant work still to be done on implementing all these changes since our declaration was made back in January. However, there is still plenty of work that we need to do, and I know that we've made great move forward, but I think I want to see us get across the finish line. With approximately 250 job classifications that span several county departments, which have been determined to have a nexus with the emergency declaration, there will continue to be expedited hiring protocols to fill these vacant positions as the county continues to increase services to people experiencing homelessness. All of these new positions are increasing the homelessness, homeless initiatives' capacity to partner with the county departments to capture and analyze, because I like to have the data to see what we're doing right and how we are doing on all county resources that can be used to prevent and end homelessness, strategically leveraging our investment and supporting our county departments in using every dollar. This is an important foundational step in moving the county forward in adopting recommendations from the Republican Committee. from the Republican Commission on Homelessness, which ultimately recommended the establishment of a standalone entity to meet the challenges associated with helping our unhoused get off the streets and into stable housing. Efforts to address homelessness are in place, and I look forward to our continued collaboration to make significant progress. Finally, I'd like to take a moment to highlight the STI crisis facing our county, and it is growing, as Supervisor Horvath said. And it demands significant commitment, which we are making toward these services in the $10 million that's being allocated today. But we will continue to call on our federal partners to increase their funding to meet this growing need. But we have to make a local investment, given the increase in the STI rates. We cannot wait for the federal government to act. But that does not mean that we should not be aggressively pursuing federal dollars. So in closing, I appreciate that our mid-year budget adjustment and final changes really focuses on stability. I appreciate the continued increase of our reserves and dedication to maintaining a social safety net. We are reminded of the balance we must maintain so that we can continuously provide necessary safety net services while ensuring the community's safety and security. Thank you, and again, thank you, FISA. And I'd like to thank my colleagues as well, as well as all of our staff. We worked, and it's about collaboration, and this doesn't happen overnight. And so I want to acknowledge all the budget staff, Michelle Vega on my staff, but all of your staffs, who have been incredible to work with. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Solis.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. I also want to thank our CEO, FISA and her team, and also all our budget deputies, including mine and my team, for working diligently too, to represent the needs. And, you know, a budget, as they always say, is a statement of our priorities and our values. And I think today, it's no different, but we're struggling. We don't have money coming in in the ways that we have in the last few years. We don't have that federal spigot. It's closing, and we have to be real about that. We also know that our housing market, property taxes that we rely on are not coming in the way that we have seen in the last two years, which is surprising to, I think, the public. And the public has to be reminded that we have to live also within our means and in terms of our budget and what those priorities are. So, you know, I am happy that even though, on the one hand, we still have set aside priorities that we should be focused on, and while they may not be everybody's, and I appreciate all the people that came in today, they're mostly gone, but I see our department heads are still here, and they're holding up their heads, hoping that they don't lose out on important funding to keep the county going. Because I really want, for me, I want my constituents to understand that, you know, our role, or at least I see my role here on the Board, is really trying to provide the safety net. And sometimes that gets lost in our discussions, and I don't want to use the word rhetoric, because maybe that's not really what I want to say, but that we really have a lot of challenges before us. And I've been here, I think, the longest on the Board, sitting, and I can tell you, this Board has changed dramatically in the last nine years. And I say thank God, because we did push forward ideas and things that we know needed to be addressed at that time, at that moment. Who would have expected that we had COVID? Who would have expected that we would have had so many federal lawsuits, consent decrees, all coming in at one time? Who would have imagined that we don't have enough money to pay for everything right now? And we also demand our departments to do a whole lot, but their budgets aren't growing adequately either. Our expectations are about, oh, keep our parks open, hire more lifeguard, have a better animal control system, have more staff at the libraries, because our kids need to be there in summer. All of these things, the fire department, everybody right now is struggling. You don't hear that much about that. But the reality is, we as Board members have to look at their budgets and figure out what priorities lay in there, and also what their mandates are, because many of them have restricted funding that we cannot change. And that's something that I think the public, sometimes we have to go through that process and understand. It doesn't mean that we don't care about priorities that the public is bringing forward to us. We do. But we try to, how could I say, thread that needle in a way that we're trying to expand it and stretch it like a rubber band, so that we can continue to cover those items that we know are important. And I'm going to say that for me, housing is still important. For me, it is still number one. And there was a report that came out last week that talked about, what are the issues? What is the driving force behind people being unhoused? It isn't necessarily the large percentage of people who are mentally ill or in substance abuse or hardened criminals. It's because of poverty, for God's sakes. It's about poverty. When you hear people that have become unhoused, and we're going to get information about our recent count, and I'm going to say it, don't be surprised. The numbers are going to be bigger, because we haven't, as a country, and I don't want to point fingers at our county, but I want to point fingers at our country and some of our legislators in Washington, DC, that have not helped us to address this issue. We're larger than many other states, what, 48 states? Just about? And no one shines a light on us, because maybe we don't complain enough, but we try to get the job done. And I think that's kudos for our departments, for our leadership, for the Board, and for our staff. I want to say that I'm going to be, I'm here for a limited time, and it is not a moment that I lose, that I don't think about what's going to happen when I leave. Who's going to be able to continue on with some of the initiatives that I care about, that I think my constituents, as well as Board members, residents also continue to talk about? And that is creating a safe haven, so they have housing, so that they also, the unhoused can come out and get the right treatment that they need on the streets. This is the first time Skid Row, I think, has all been included in one district. And I share that with the Mayor Bass, and also with some council members. But we all have different ideas. We're touching the elephant sometimes with the blindfold on, and we're feeling different things. And we all have to understand that even with that, we have limited resources. So let's try to work on getting the job done, getting people housed, making sure that we use our funding streams that are coming in. And I want to thank the Governor for the 60 million that came in for Skid Row, because we had an idea, we had a plan to address Skid Row. And thank God, they funded it. And I want to give kudos to our departments that stood that up, because people for the last couple of months have been meeting day in and day out, including participants from the unhoused community. When did we ever give them a platform to speak legitimately and put forward plans? And now it's being paid for. It will be paid for by the county, by the city, but in part by the state. So I want to thank those individuals that participated in those discussions and brought us to this. But again, we can't stop. We have to do more affordable housing. And I agree, we have to look at what happens in terms of our families that are suffering because of poverty. So that means providing better public assistance, having our departments stand up and be available, and to understand that we can lose a lot of money or we can gain some money if we work appropriately to make sure that we don't lose people that can actually be enrolled in our Medi-Cal programs. DPS, a lot of our agencies should be helping us. We can get revenue to pay for healthcare in a better way. I don't know that we're doing it, but I hope, I know we're doing it, but we need to do more. That's what I want to say. I do want to say in the budget that we are paying for some things. I heard from the audience about jobs for young people. Well, I want to give a shout out to ISD, because we have a hell of a staff out there working hard to create opportunities and going after funding, not just from the federal government, but from the state. And that's to create positions, intern positions. How many of our young people from our districts need to know and would love to have the opportunity to go into a new career, a new segment, enterprise, IT? IT will create a lifeline for many of our kids. So I want to give a shout out to ISD and to everybody that's been helping on that, including the CEO, and everyone that's been involved in that. I also want to give a shout out to our parks, because when I came on this Board, that was the initiative, Measure A, that I was involved in. And I think maybe at some point later on, when conditions are better, we should look at upping that funding cycle, so we can hopefully get a bit more money. Because I think during the time that we passed it, we might have shortchanged ourselves. But again, that was a different Board. This priority for, I think this Board is very different. And we know that parks are very much about our health and well-being. And now, more than ever, we need them for our seniors, for our disabled, for our children, for the fact that we need to have mental health, how could I say, levers of hope, healing that are available to everybody. I want to say that this budget also includes 30 million in the Care First Community Investment Fund, and that is also to transition our lowest-risk incarcerated individuals into non-carceral. So I want the advocates to understand that. We're fighting to try to see that people that are in our care, while they are, that they get better treatment. And I can tell this Board, I was there a couple of weeks ago, Men Central Jail, visited with staff, saw what our medical teams were going through, also our custody staff, along with the judge. And what I saw was pitiful. It is substandard. It is not acceptable. And I know, a few years ago, I'm the one that proposed this whole idea of closing down Men Central Jail. I still believe that. I haven't changed that. But I've got to work with conditions on the Board, economic conditions, as well as federal consent decrees. And that is what's hurting us in some way, not to move faster, but we're not letting that push us back. We're going to keep moving to do more. $7.3 million in CFCI funding is going to help pay for subacute mental health beds. We've been hearing the advocates talk about that. We're going to do it, and we need to do more. It can't happen quick enough, for sure, but we've got to do more. I can go on and on. I'm very happy that 19 million is going to be made available for 41 positions, nursing support that we heard today, mental health services for forensic inpatient psychiatric units in our jails. And I wish I could close all the jails, but guess what? We don't have enough spaces or beds outside. So the point is, we've got to create the beds, we've got to create the infrastructure, we've got to have CBOs, but as well as our departments engaged in that, because every dollar we spend has to be accounted for. And there are laws that govern our spending, and people need to understand that. So lastly with that, I want to say, I know the sheriff was supposed to come and speak to us, but he had to leave. Think he has staff here. But I want to say that one of the recommendations that was put forward by the COC was to, out of 47 recommendations, was to create positions at some of our jails. And one that I think was very important for some of us is the creation of having two captains at the East L.A. Sheriff's Station. And you know why? Because we have to get the rot out. We have to keep that rot out in East L.A. and start somewhere. And if you have someone who can be internally inside overseeing the administration and making sure that things are run appropriately, we need that. We also need a front-facing individual. But I'm not saying that this is going to be the cure-all, because it has to be evaluated, and we have to look at the data. And there should be more oversight in terms of how that's going to be conducted. But at this point, I support that. The individual that's already been assigned to my East L.A. facility, one of them anyway, is already met with several of our community members, and apparently, they like the discussions and the communication, because it never exists, it didn't exist for a couple of years, and I can tell you that. So I'm happy about that. I think with that, I'm just going to say that we have a lot to do, a lot of work. We don't have as much money as I'd like to see, but I think we're using it in a judicial, judicious manner that I think will help take us forward. And I'm going to pray that we get more funds in the future, and that our economy can really sustain itself, but that everyone gets equal treatment, because poverty, to me, is still here, and we still need to address that. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. We will join you in that prayer for more money. Supervisor Mitchell.
Madam Chair, thank you very much. And I've been the amen corner over here. I have, I'm glad I was toward the end, because I got to hear comments made by all of you. And, you know, I agree. I agree. Before I get to my statement, I just want to ask a couple of clarifying, a couple of questions based on your line of questioning, Supervisor Horvath. We've heard advocacy groups today talk about, reference a number of reports, Youth Justice Reimagined Report in particular. And I'm wondering if we, as a Board, have ever thought about, or the CEO's office ever thought about, when those kind of reports come out, and they become the standard, the basic level expectation of our community, do we at any point not challenge the report, but provide some context to the report? Do a side-by-side? Yes, this is within our power solely. This is not. Because as you talked about, wanting to have a legislative strategy, you know, having all of our CBOs and constituents join with us to go to Sacramento and say, we need you to change this policy around the role of the chief probation officer to allow us to completely stand up independently, our depart, you see what I'm saying? So, because what happens is, you hear these reports cited as the gospel. We hear Measure J, although the courts have deemed it unconstitutional. We therefore rolled over to CFCI, but we continue to hear reference to Measure J. At what point and what role do we play in giving context to these documents and research reports that are in the universe that become the full expectation in isolation?
Thank you for that question, Supervisor. I think it's an excellent question. So what often happens is, there will be a report from a consultant. That report will be issued in a public manner. Sometimes the Board will move to adopt the recommendations of the report, and then it's likely assigned to a department, sometimes CEO, sometimes other departments, to say, come back and tell us how you would implement that. What happens in that process, however, is, so I'll just take my office, for example. When the Youth Justice Reimagined Report came out, we were trying to develop an implementation plan, but also correct the posture of the report. So we were trying to explain, you know, we can't sweep all these positions. I know it says it in the report, but there are some legal barriers. And so we're trying to explain, you know, course correct a little bit, and then say, with all of those things said, here is the implementation plan. Oftentimes, it's very difficult at that point to roll it back, especially if the recommendations have been adopted. And it doesn't always happen that way, but it often happens that way.
And I don't know that I would ask that we roll it back. And I appreciate your term course correction. I think the challenge with that sometimes is, I think, particularly if the report has been commissioned by kind of a third-party entity, they don't trust our course correction, because they don't trust the way in which we've tried to solve the problems thus far. So that becomes a challenge. And I guess then maybe it's up to us in terms of our own self-discipline, that maybe a step we take before we ask you to come back and tell us what you can do, is that we say, can you tell us out of this report what we can do, what we can't? Maybe it's just a step we need to take. So we're clear, and the public is clear about what is truly within our power to do, what we can do through collaboration with others to influence other levels of government, whatever the case is. You know, when we talk about early release, well, there's a role for the sheriff to play, there's a role for the courts to play. And yet, you know, the courts aren't in a forum like this where the public can come and make the appeal to them directly. We call on members of the bench and bar to engage with us in the dialogue. And so really trying to put front and center clarity around who is responsible and how we can advocate together, really versus this perceived finger-pointing, it's not me, it's them. But to really, I think, put some of those policy ideas in context, I think, is an important role we can play.
Supervisor, if I could just put a finer point in my answer. It's not that the Board never asks, like, come back and give me a legal opinion as to whether this can happen, or tell me if this is doable. I think what happens is oftentimes, the consultant's report is adopted in a very public way at a Board meeting. The CEO report or the county council report is often a report back. So there's sort of an unequal, like, the amplification of the message is uneven, I'll say uneven, and then we're also reporting back on implementation.
Can we not vote to accept the report until we are clear about if and how it can be operationalized? operationalized, those kinds of things? Because then maybe we combat that by joining the process, that once we accept the report, we are also articulating what we've learned in terms of a report back.
I think if that's the board's pleasure, the board could do that, is to get an assessment of what the recommendations are legally, funding-wise, implementation-wise, are there labor issues, are there facilities issues, et cetera, et cetera. And then, once that conversation is held, then we could move forward with the implementation plan.
I would just hope it would be something we consider as I listen to, you know, Supervisor Salis and the general public today, that if there is a way in which we could be strategic and transparent, as opposed to accepting the reports, the public sees, hears a motion that may indeed be a report back, but as I know when I first joined the board, I was listening to public comment one day, and I think, and I said, you know, "They think that we actually took the action." No, the motion was a report back. And so, ways in which we can be, I think, more transparent and clear, and learn from these experiences, and maybe change the way in which we do things, so, you know, what we get are actions that we can take legally as the board, those that we can't, that we're clear about that, and we engage with other partners to try to influence the body that can. A second kind of follow-up from what I heard from, thank you Supervisor Horvath, you know, with regard to the closure of men's central jail, is, I don't know if there's anyone here from ODR who can provide clarity about, based on the number of beds, ODR beds we have online now, and expect to stand up in this budget year, how many additional beds we need to meet the current population need of men's central jail? You know, a part of my effort to work to find a permanent funding source for ODR was to get to a place where we could talk about a date by which men's central jail could close. So, if ODR could provide clarification, how many beds we have, how many we need, if it's not just ODR, if it's the MIST, FIS, J-COD beds, if they're General Department of Mental Health beds, if someone could just say...
So, Supervisor, I'm going to, Mason Matthews from my office just whispered in my ear that in the P3, P4 report, there is a timeline given, which is five years to address the P3, P4 population. However, that would not totally or completely decompress the jail population to the number that we need. In terms of answering your question and the question that Supervisor Horvath mentioned earlier, I feel like we just need to do a report back. There's a number of reports out there, and they all have different timelines. I think the question is, what is the realistic timeline, considering the number of providers we have, community-based providers, how many are able position to support this population, what is the funding that's available? Oftentimes, I think we have reports, and the reports are based on ideal conditions. If all of these ideal conditions existed and they aligned, here is what we would be able to do. But then, when we move into implementation, then we run into challenges, we'll have staffing challenges, we can't get the contracts out, et cetera, et cetera.
I think that would be helpful, because then we, as a board, could decide if the timeline that you come back with is unacceptable to us as a board, that helps us prioritize our budget conversations. Because if the timeline is unacceptable, and we identify that additional resources here or there could speed up that timeline, then that's a policy decision we, as a board, could make. So, I think that would be a very helpful step, so we are clear about, based on all the reports and the realities, what a timeline is, so then we can decide, we need to prioritize our funding in this area to expedite or not. So, that report back would be helpful for my perspective.
So, we will work with J-COD and ODNR and the relevant partners. What often happens with these types of assignments is there's a lot of discussion and, you know, going on, you know, behind the scenes. But one of the things that might be helpful going forward, and it doesn't have to be as supplemental, is that if we're all here together, elevating this to the board's attention in real time, so that we can all hear the same information at the same time.
I would find that helpful, because, you know, absent that, we will continue to hear, "The report said, 'Do this, just do this, and you can close it.'" And if that isn't feasible, then we need to elevate the reality. And again, that information empowers us, as a board, to set the priorities and provide direction in terms of where funding should go to get us to closure, to get us to realizing the board's collective vision around closure. That would be, I would find that very helpful. I appreciate you answering those questions. Let me echo all of my colleagues. Thank you, thank you, thank you. Ms. Davenport, your team, all of our collective budget teams, everybody knows, I think that the budget document is the most important work we do as a board, for all the reasons that we've all stated. Because we are the safety net, because we are the provider of last resort for far too many Angelenos who have suffered and continue to suffer, this work, I think, is so very I want to thank the members of the public who showed up today in significant numbers, those who participated in my budget, my virtual Budget Town Halls. I want to thank those who submitted thoughtful documents in terms of, you know, their version of a people's budget. Even though our budget process is complex and complicated, they are doing all that they can, based on the infrastructure and the budget system that we have in place, to really try to understand it, figure it out. We hear it in their testimony, we see it in the documents they bring forward, and I appreciate that. I, you know, again, want to lift up issues raised, the ACLU lifting up the issue with regard to phone and commissary costs in jails, an issue that I've worked on for many years, I appreciate them acknowledging that. Again, the need for ongoing investment in STIs, the comment via a telephonic commenter with regard to lifeguards. I was at three pools this weekend, you know, I jump in pools in the 2nd District for the opening day of the pools, and learned a lot about our lifeguard issue. It's not always costs, it's also some administrative efficiencies that we could see through the process. You know, access to pools and swimming lessons is an equity issue, because far too many black and brown kids die through drowning in L.A. County. We have a big rainstorm, L.A. River gets six inches, and kids die. And we know why that happens, and we know that the systemic racism that prevented children of color from swimming in public pools, that we're still reacting to. And so, making sure we have lifeguards for me is a critical violence prevention issue in terms of drownings that still happen at a disproportionate rate in my district. And so, some of the issues aren't always financial, it's administrative efficiencies and doing things smarter, and so I appreciate that being raised, because that's an issue that I'm going to continue to look at. And as we talk about alternatives to incarceration, access to parks and swimming, and those amazing intro-to-county government jobs that the lifeguard program offers, I think are very important. So, I'll continue to follow that. Want to echo the opportunity for jobs that ISD, you know, not only IT, but bioscience is a huge sector in L.A. County, and we, as a county, have removed all kind of barriers to people entering that sector. So, I want to thank our other county departments who are putting, who are thinking out of the box and thinking creatively around creating employment opportunities for systems-involved people and our young people. The challenge, I often feel as an agent of county government, is connecting people who need those resources to the resources we make available. How do we let them know and connect them to these job opportunities? That's always a challenge. Yes, poverty alleviation is a critical role we must play as county government, so I do want to thank the CEO for the additional resources to expand our Guaranteed Basic Income Program. It is a national model that I believe can affect true change in eliminating multi-generational poverty, so thank you for that investment. Love the videos always, thank you for your PowerPoint. Like Supervisor Salis said, I am clear that we've got very limited, ongoing, and new funds, which is why and when we must be clear about what we are funding with those very limited funds. When we're flush, it's easy to spend money, and your priorities can be kind of loose, but when the going gets tough, that's when we have to be more vigilant in our own effort to communicate our priorities as a board. Looking at the new net county cost dollars that the CEO is recommending in this budget phase for overall program changes, it stands out that 13.5 million of that limited amount is going to the Sheriff's Department budget. With only 18.9 million available county-wide in this section of the budget, that accounts for 70% of the available funds going to the Sheriff's Department. And that total doesn't include the 51.8 million that's being moved into custody operations and health at the jails to fulfill our legal obligations. Now, I am clear that because of all of the legal ramifications, from consent decrees to court orders to lawsuits, I'm clear that there are some payments we have to make. But again, in a limited budget, with a frightening forecast, housing sales down, that's the core source of our general fund, that 70% of the new net county cost dollars are going to that department. I think it's a problem, as evidenced by many people we heard today, when we recognize all of our ongoing needs at the county level and new cost and responsibility. Care court, expanding beds, mental health beds, those are new obligations that we're taking on, that we do not have 100% guarantee that we're going to be fully reimbursed from the state. And with these limited NCC dollars, I think that we have to be surgical in how we assess their equitable application, and have equitable outcome measures that we use to determine whether or not that investment was in the best interest of the county as a whole. You know, I've also talked about, and have discussed in this context for the last couple of years, how we've got to refine our processes to ensure that our programs are solving for the right problems in community, and better utilize data and evidence to inform our budget process and our outcomes. You know, for example, tomorrow at our board meeting, we're going to be briefed on the findings of the State of Black L.A. County Report, and the report paints a stark picture of the investments this board still needs to make, given the current outcomes faced by black residents here in L.A. County. You know, how are we taking into account data that we already receive and know, and how we are integrating and prioritizing them in our budget proceedings? Those are issues that continue to give me cause for concern, based on our overall budget process. I think it's going to be critical that we establish strategies to not only engage the community in our budget process, but just to make sure that we, as a board, are weighing in on all of the priorities and motions we've passed, and evaluating data that comes before us. Lastly, I will say, I think it's really important, and I appreciate the department heads for being here, that we are the front line of local government for unincorporated communities. And our unincorporated communities are suffering with a capital S. And so, it's our responsibility to provide excellent services for them, and I believe our budget and resource allocation must reflect that we are committed to our role as the primary municipal services provider for those communities, and I will continue to look forward to working with our department heads proactively and making sure those needs are being met. I've asked, when we get to the point where we're going to actually take up the budget items, that one be held, because as I talked about, the percentage of the very limited NCC dollars that are going to one department, I want to have the opportunity to articulate my specific concerns and hear back from the Sheriff's Department, specifically with regard to their strategy on combating sheriff gangs. So, I'll reserve some additional questions, Madam Chair, to that section of our agenda. Again, thank you, Madam CEO, for what you presented to us today. I am clear that we don't have an unlimited checkbook, our budget is not infinite, all the more reason for us to come together as a board and provide you with clear direction and priorities about, from our perspective, what needs to be the priority of what we fund. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Okay, I am the last of us to speak. I agree, it's great listening to my colleagues' thoughtful concerns and questions, and I appreciate that. I too want to acknowledge Fesia, your whole team, for this incredibly time-consuming task, and to all of our budget deputies, we couldn't do it without them. And again, thank you to our department heads who are over there, been sitting there all day. Thank you, listening to all of this input. It's always good for all of us, as advocacy, to listen to the public who comes and weighs in on their concerns about what we are funding in the county's budget. And just because I'm not going to highlight all of our county departments in my remarks doesn't mean that I don't value each and every one of you so much, and know that each of you delivers incredible services to our county residents in your own way, in your own department, but I would dare say all of you care deeply about the residents of L.A. County, and care deeply about the services that we really depend on you to deliver. So, thank you for that. But I did just want to, just from my own perspective, highlight some of the investments that this budget makes in providing mental health care, specifically to people in our jails and out in our communities. This budget provides money to implement programs in our county jails to comply with our DOJ lawsuit. This includes providing more mental health services for people with severe mental illness in our jails. And I know a lot of people came down here today and spoke out and disagree with this, but the reality is, number one, we are facing a lawsuit, but we have people in our jails who need and deserve mental health care. And yes, we are working to get this population out of our jails, because we agree that's not where they belong, but in the meantime, I am not going to abandon them, and I don't think this board wants to abandon them. And so, they deserve to receive treatment, and this budget helps provide for that. We're dedicating almost 30 million to getting people with severe mental illness out of our county jails and into secure mental health treatment facilities. And again, this will help us get more out of our jails of those who don't belong there, and get them into the therapeutic facilities where they can get the treatment that they need. And speaking of being in the jails, I know, Fesia, again, we listened to all the comments, but I do know that I was struck by the, our correctional healthcare workers who came down and spoke, and I do hope maybe in the future, we can talk about what they specifically wanted, you don't need to answer this now, about recruitment bonuses, and whether or not we can extend that to them. So, love to talk about that later, because I was compelled by their arguments. You know, another part of our mental health system is intervening with people before, with people with severe mental illness, before they hurt themselves or others, and end up in our jails in the first place. That's why I love it that this budget- in our jails in the first place. That's why I love it that this budget has two new risk assessment and management program teams ramp. It consists of mental health clinicians paired with our deputies who assess individuals with mental health illnesses who have frequent contacts with law enforcement and intervene with services instead of arresting them. That's a perfect example of care first, jail last. And lastly, I want to close by thanking you for investing in our Office of Immigrant Affairs in this budget. A few weeks ago, I think we all were made aware of a group of asylum seekers, including many families with young children who arrived here from Texas. And thanks to the hard work and preparation of our county staff, our partners in the city of LA, the Catholic Church, Churla, we were ready to receive them with open arms and support them. And this budget includes funding for an additional position in the Office of Immigrant Affairs to support their ongoing efforts and ensure that we can continue to provide dignity and compassion to asylum seekers and immigrants here in LA County. So I look forward to working with my colleagues and our CEO to fulfill our responsibility that we have and our philosophy on this board for the people who call LA County their home. Thank you again for presenting this balanced budget. And now... Do we vote on this, item one? Okay, so now we will hear from our CEO, is that right, on item one?
Yes.
Yes.
Again, thank you, Madam Chair and Supervisors. So today, we will start with Agenda Item Number One. That's the fiscal year, that's the fiscal year 2223 budget issues. This letter reflects our second mid-year appropriation and budget adjustment board letter, commonly known as the Second Year BA. This letter recommends a variety of changes, which we also call adjustments, to the operating and our capital budgets that were approved by your board on October 4th, 2022, when the board adopted the fiscal year 2223 final adopted budget. By adopting the recommendations in this letter, your board will authorize changes to the operating and capital budgets as referenced in the letter, so that the budgets will align with transactions that have occurred since the time of the adoption of the budget on October 4th. This letter also delegates authority to me or my designee to execute and, if necessary, amend or terminate a funding agreement with the Los Angeles County Museum of Natural History Foundation in an amount not to exceed $6 million for the deferred maintenance of mechanical systems as part of the commons renovation project. Item number one, the fiscal year 2223 second mid-year budget adjustment recommendations are before you.
Okay, moved by Supervisor Barker, seconded by Supervisor Solis. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Item one is before you, Supervisor Solis.
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Mitchell.
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Horath.
Aye.
Supervisor Horath, aye. Supervisor Barker.
Aye.
Supervisor Barker, aye. Supervisor Hahn.
Aye.
Supervisor Hahn, aye. Motion carries five to zero.
Okay, now we're going to hear from our Chief Executive Officer on item two. And sheriff representatives are also here and available for questions.
Thank you, Chair Hahn and Supervisors. Item, Agenda Item Number Two is the fiscal year 2324 budget items. This agenda item is comprised of two items, Agenda Item 2A and 2B. Item 2A is a report of issues raised at the public budget hearings, which were held on Wednesday, May 10th, 2023. The report summarizes issues raised at the hearings by oral and written testimony, including by individual supervisors and departmental requests for additional funding for various programs. This report is a receive and file. Item 2B is a board letter representing our recommendations for adjustments to the fiscal year 2324 recommended budget, which your board adopted on April 18th, 2023. This agenda item is comprised of five recommendations. The first recommendation seeks a finding that the proposed capital project actions referenced in the board letter are not projects within the meaning of the California Environmental Quality Act based on the record of the proposed activities. The second recommendation requests that the board adopt the proposed changes to the 202324 recommended county budget as set forth in the board letter and the attachments to the letter. The third, fourth, and fifth recommendations seek delegated authority related to funding agreements. Specifically, the letter seeks authorization from me or my designee for the Director of Economic Development or her designee and for the Executive Officer of the Board or her designee respectively, to execute and amend, if necessary, or terminate funding agreements in the amount stated and for the purposes specified for a variety of programs included in this budget letter. So, Item 2A consisting of the receive and file, and then Item 2B consisting of the five distinct items I just summarized are before you.
Okay, thank you. And I see Ms. Mitchell's on the queue. But before we go to 2B, under 2A, I just wanted to make a comment about the unmet needs for parks and rec. And I know they requested new facility funds for a new park in Walnut Park. And in this budget cycle, they're receiving a good amount in funding, but there's still a gap for Nogales Park, particularly for, I think, staffing. So, and I know we talked about it earlier, it's great to build parks, but unless they have the money to staff it, and this is an area, I know Supervisor Solis knows it well, that was very underserved in terms of any kind of park. So this is kind of one of the first parks they've ever had. So, they're looking for another 100,000 during the supplemental budget for that park. And I hope we can, you can look for that in the supplemental.
Supervisor will come back with the recommendation and supplemental.
Thank you, thank you. Okay. Now, so now, is anybody else under 2A, unmet, unmet needs? Okay, so let's go on to 2B. Supervisor Mitchell, I see you on the queue.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. I appreciate it. And I thank you all for coming in and, and, and spending so much time with us today. You know, as I said in my earlier comments, I have questions frankly about the timing and sequencing of this budget request, which again is the 1.5 million allocated to the Sheriff's Department for three additional captain positions. I am clear and always have been that there is a deputy gang issue in the Sheriff's Department, and I'm in full support of all efforts by the department, the CEO, the, the COC, and this board to eradicate deputy gangs. That's not the issue. The issue for me is when I look at all of the recommendations that the COC made, when I consider all of the competing interests for resources, it feels to me like we've put the cart before the horse. We've asked questions about what is the overall strategy? Some of the other recommendations included, you know, you know, conversations with ALADS and PPOA about supportive vision policies and objectives regarding deputy gangs. I don't, I am not aware, so I'm hoping you can tell me about what the initiative, your overall initiative, this seems like one plug. It feels a little hodgepodge that we're going to identify these three captains. Are the captains then responsible for coming up with the initiative? I, I heard Supervisor Solis talking about having boots on the ground and supervision and oversight. I get that. But if we're talking about a, a multi-generational culture shift, it's going to take more than three captains in three precincts. And so I need to hear from you all on behalf of the sheriff what the overall initiative is. Because as we're talking about budgeting, because this is coming in our budget hearing, I would assume that there are multiple actions that you are going to want to take that will have budget implications too. So I'm needing to see the full plan and full picture and understand the timing of the rollout, you know, before I can agree today in 1.5 million dollars. What's the overall plan?
Supervisor Mitchell, thank you for your question. Let me give you an overview of some of the-
And why don't you all identify yourself too?
I'm sorry.
When you speak for the, for the public too.
Jill Torres, Assistant Sheriff and Chief Financial and Administrative Officer. Supervisor Mitchell, some of the other items that we've done related to the COC, as you know, the Office of Constitutional Policing has stood up and the policy on deputy gangs has been drafted, and it's currently being reviewed by Labor. We are putting conditions into our employment conditions that employees who are hired by the department will not join deputy gangs. We're in the process of doing that right now.
So that's for new hires. Let's also hear about existing employees.
For new hires, yes. I, I just wanted to tell you also, our policy on tattoos, our policy on logos, both have been drafted and are being reviewed by Labor. Specifically with regard to the, the additional actions being taken by the department, I'm going to ask Under Sheriff April Tardy to talk about a internal commission that has been created, as well as the role and responsibilities we see with regard to the two, the two captains at each station. And so, April, if you'd like to.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. Thank you for allowing us to speak on this item. As a former station captain, there are a lot of different aspects of a station captain that are very important, one being community engagement, the other is holding our personnel accountable, and the oversight within the, within the station. Although the recommendations for a two-captain model is new to our department, it's not new to local law enforcement, as LAPD has the same model. We too adopted some, the recommendation of this two-captain model. Even though it's new for us, one of the things that we're looking at is a two-pronged approach and bifurcating the duties of a station captain. One being an operations captain, the other as an administrative captain. So the operations captain deals with all of the external issues that a station captain would normally deal with internally and externally. So they would be part of city council, building a robust community engagement program, dealing with crime strategies. The, the administrative captain or the internal captain will deal with our consent decrees and ensure that we're in compliance with these, making sure that we have the training that is required for us to move our department forward. In addition to that, some of the consent decrees and settlement agreements, and just making sure that we're in line with those things as well. Also, their role is to deal with the deputy gangs and cliques that we have at the stations. With the bifurcation of the captain position, we have one captain who is solely responsible for reviewing administrative paperwork, identifying any problem employees, so that the problem can be addressed immediately, whether through training, discipline, whatever the issues are. So we have that model in place. As far as some of the things that we've done so far, along with the policies that we have in place and that are pending.
That are, that are draft and draft form, not implemented.
That's correct.
And do you have a time, what, because for me, it's not, I, I'm not questioning whether the captains make sense or that it's a new, my question is sequencing and timing and what should come first. So drafted, not implemented.
Correct.
Do you have an idea about implementation timeframe?
I'm unsure of the implementation time period. I think the holdup right now is labor, and we're at the point right now where our process is a lot quicker than it had been in the past. There were some draft policies that were in draft for over three years.
Sure.
We have expedited that process, and I would say in the next, or in a month or two, we have policies that are written and implementation, we're still working on that. As far as what we've done so far, we have a deputy gang clique subgroup working group that was established in February, and we have put out messaging, what we're, what we're working on, it's like five prongs. We're looking at messaging, how we're going to message it internally to our department members. Although the sheriff has already put out a message regarding deputy cliques, subgroups and gangs, we're looking at more messaging, putting that out to our, our personnel. We're looking at how, how are we going to put out our message to the public and public messaging? We're talking about videos that we're going to make. We're talking about having the input from our labor unions as well as the Office of Inspector General. They're part of this, this group that we've been working on. And we have Chief Johnson here. He's actually one of the heads of this working group. And we meet once a month, and we identify problems and solutions, and then we move forward so that we can send out our messaging department-wide.
So, so question, these additional activities that you're engaged in, do you, do you intend to, to, you mentioned videos and messaging. Will those costs be covered under your existing budget, or will you have additional budget ask to pay for this expanded kind of initiative or vision?
Yeah, so our, I don't believe it requires any additional funding. What we'll do is internally, we have a media production center, which will make our videos. As far as messaging and messaging out to the public, we'll put all this information out on our transparency pages.
I would just say, you know, Madam Chair, I, I am not comfortable today voting on the additional resources. As our video outlined at the top of our meeting, this isn't, even though the word final is in it, it today is not final. October is the supplemental. And in that, you've got so many of these policies in draft form, you mentioned a couple of months. You know, I would be, I, I would like to have my colleagues consider a read in motion today that would basically say that we would, you know, shift the dollars, the 1.5 million today, to the provisional finance uses, the PFU, and direct the Chief Executive Officer to report back during the 2324 supplemental budget phase with recommendations and a funding plan to support the sheriff in eradicating deputy gangs and cliques. That could either be funding the three captains, but at least it would, from my perspective and my comfort level, give us more time to see the implementation of a fuller plan. It's great to hear that these policies are in draft form, but from my perspective, it needs to be a comprehensive plan to address the clear, decades-long, deeply entrenched problem that we all have, constituents, you, the department, we all have. I am not convinced. You know, you know, we don't know what Labor will do with the policies. We don't know how long that will take. And, and it will require more than three captains, as great as the plan is, that piece of it, to truly create a culture shift. And so, I'd like to provide a read in motion, Madam Chair. Again, therefore, move that the Board of Supervisors revise the CEO's recommended adjustments to the 2324 recommended budget by removing the adjustment that adds 3.0 captain positions to the Sheriff's Department patrol budget units as referenced on Attachment One, Page 28, Item 7, and transfer the corresponding appropriation of 1.583 to the provisional financing uses, various budget unit services and supplies appropriation, to be set aside for measures to eradicate deputy gangs and cliques in the Sheriff's Department. You know, again, as we talk about culture shift, I think it would be very, very important for me, and I hope you have an internal way of determining that the captains you promote don't have a history of being engaged in the gangs themselves, right? And, and I'm not clear as a part of your plan if, if you have a process by which you are identifying who gang members are, so you can avoid hiring them to be the captains in these new positions. And so I, I hope you hear that I have lots of questions. I hope you don't interpret it as my not wanting to support you in your efforts. For me, it is a sequencing issue and a timing issue. I don't have a full sense- I don't have a full sense of a fuller plan and timing of that. And I think we do have more time in our budget process to give you the time to get further along.
Okay, so we have a read-in motion.
Yes ma'am.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, it's read-in and a second. I know from my perspective, I'm going to support the Civilian Oversight Commission's recommendation, as well as the sheriff, as well as our CEO, who has put this in the budget. It was, yes, there are 27 recommendations, but one of them, and we heard the sheriff come speak to us earlier, about doubling up on captains in some of the stations that have had a history of trouble. And it's, he referred to it as, you know, checks and balances, felt it was a good idea. And it's my understanding that it's a pilot, we're not adding captains to every station, we're starting with three at stations that have historically had challenges. And it's my understanding they're going to be in the East LA, Lancaster and Palmdale stations. And I know Supervisor Solis and I both share the East LA, it serves three cities in my district, Commerce, Cudahay and Maywood. I hear you Supervisor Mitchell, I hear you that certainly three new captains does not change the entire culture of a department that we know needs to change. But on the other hand, we have to start somewhere and short of implementing all 27 strategies at once, I think this is a good step. And I've told the sheriff that I would support him and back him when he came to us with reasonable solutions that also are in line with the Citizens Oversight Committee. So Supervisor Solis?
Yes, I actually wanted to ask Daniela Vapey, the interim COC, to come forward. She's here. Because I want her to give us the history of how this all evolved. Because this is, in my opinion, very important to the discussion.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you, welcome. Can you please give us a quick overview of how this all came about, the recommendation?
Oh, can you turn your mic on? Can you turn her mic on? Did they turn everybody's mic off after public comment was over?
It's terrible.
It's not, it's not on. Okay.
Thank you Supervisor Solis, and thank you Supervisor Mitchell for your concern. I don't know if I can answer all your questions. On behalf of the Commission, the Commission started doing an investigation into deputy gangs back in 2021, 2022. And over the course of eight hearings and interviewing hundreds of witnesses and several academics, their report came about with the 27 recommendations. And they believed that this would assist in, just one step, I agree with Supervisor Mitchell, it's just one part of the process to eradicate deputy gangs. I think I made a couple points based on what the concern. The Commission has been able to, the Ad-Hoc Committee on Deputy Gangs, who supported the special counsel and assisted the special counsel in some of the investigation, did have the opportunity to review the policies, the deputy gang policy, the logo policy and the tattoo policy. And the Sheriff's Department did accept some of the Commission's recommendations for edits to the policies. So we have reviewed it, we do support the policies. At each and every one of our meetings, we have mentioned to the department that their policies needed to be enforced and implemented forthwith. So we agree Supervisor Mitchell, that the captain is just one point and that the policies need to be implemented. So we are also pushing for that. That is the part of transparency and accountability that we feel is in fact the start. But as far as the Commission is concerned, they want all of the 27 recommendations done yesterday. So I don't know if you have any particular questions that I can answer for you, but the Commission does in fact stand by their recommendation for the two captain. Some of what I think came up in their investigation is that there didn't seem to be enough supervision to allow for the accountability, to allow for a real investigation and overview of what was happening in the station and how the deputy gangs and cliques were farming and allowed to farm and the culture allowed to fester. So that's why the Commission believed that that was just one step in terms of eradicating deputy gangs.
Thank you. I also had an opportunity to talk to the sheriff, actually a couple of months ago. He came in and explained to me that this was an item that he really felt needed to be addressed. And I had to look back and of course, this came out of the COC, it wasn't just his idea. And if I'm hearing this, also LAPD has the same similar setup, which is interesting too, because I didn't know that. However, I will say that I think in the last couple of months or so, maybe less than that, we've had a new captain placed there and I forget his name, but my staff has told me that they met with him, he's met with community, and they see a very stark difference. And maybe, you know, it's still new, but I'm very appreciative that there was time taken to select that individual, who has, I guess, you know, the reputation for working with folks and really getting at those core issues that need to be fixed. And in this situation for me, I'm being very selfish here, I'm looking at East LA where the source of the gangs may have started, this is 50 years ago. And we heard time and time again, as long as I've been on the board, about the gangs and the fact that we have to do something. So I'm willing to give this new sheriff, unlike the previous sheriff, to put some structure to at least to start that. And I get it Supervisor Mitchell, this isn't a done deal for anything. I want to see data on how this rolls out, it's a pilot. It is costly, we know that, because he originally, sheriff wanted, I think, six, and there probably could have been some placement in South Central in the second district, but we didn't quite make it. So I think that's something that I would push for as well, because what we're hearing historically is that the problems are centered in two districts primarily. We don't know what we don't know yet, but at least we should start. And I agree that we should keep the ball moving and to have those reports from you, from the sheriff. Hopefully next time he'll be able to be here, I understand he had another appointment. But I think it is important and for him to meet individually with all the board members, to brief them exactly on what the plan is. Because I too am concerned, I think the community may have expectations about the 27 recommendations, some of which I kind of had some little bit back and forth on as well, because I'm not sure that one size fits all for everything. And one was, recommendation was to move deputies around in certain offices. And some people were calling our offices saying, wait a minute, we've had so-and-so here for five years, or they're doing quite fine and we got used to the person. Well, that may be fine, but my concern is that if there are some issues with discipline or there's any alleged, you know, involvement in deputy gangs, it doesn't matter, we have to clean, we have to clean that slate. So I'm prepared to do that as well. But I think on this issue, I did speak to the sheriff and with the staff, and I think it's, at least for me, I know I want to see something done, my community wants something done. And we need to get somebody, somebody else in there. We have one person who's there now, and I'm hopeful that the community, and I've been promised, and this is what the tradition has been, community gets to interview and make the recommendation as to who that second person will be. And they did that before, but this is a little different now, we have a new sheriff, and I think we have to underscore that. So I just want to respectfully tell Supervisor Mitchell that I can't support your amendment, because I do agree with the recommendation that the CEO has made and the sheriff at this time.
Thank you. And just to follow up on, the community, again, is very, wants to be very engaged with its captains and commanding officers. We know that the first duty of the captain is certainly internal, and that's a lot of what we want to see in terms of rooting out deputy gangs, but we really want these captains to engage with the community, that is, the communities that are served by these stations. I think that is something we don't want to lose, just because we're adding a captain. They have to be accountable to the community, they have to engage with the community. I think it's really important that our communities buy in to who their commanding officers are at their stations. Supervisor Mitchell?
I appreciate that. I just want to clarify that for me, this was not about captains not being assigned to the second district at all, I just wanted to clarify that. It is about sequencing and the fact that, I appreciate their 27 recommendations, but that we are approving allocation for the hiring of additional captains when we have no finalized policy regarding deputy gangs. I appreciate this sheriff's perspective and the difference he is, is the different way in which he's leading, but just to reiterate, some of the, at least five or six of the recommendations, that we don't have completion yet. Adopt a policy that clearly prohibits deputies from participating in deputy gangs as defined by Penal Code. To adopt a policy that prohibits gangs from, deputies from joining, participating in and soliciting others to join deputy cliques. The sheriff should develop a department-wide initiative to end deputy gangs and deputy cliques. The sheriff should seek the support of ALADS, that's what we're waiting on. Any captain who was unable or unwilling to support the sheriff's policy without reservations should be subject to appropriate discipline ranging from transfer to a less critical position with little or no presence of deputy gangs and deputy cliques to termination. So without a policy, those actions can't be taken. Without the policy, other than the administrative, all the other administrative duties you talked about besides deputy gangs and engaging with the community, they, these new captains have no policy to guide their work. That's my point. And so again, the read-in is to delay the decision until supplemental in October.
Okay, alright, so-
That's my point, but again, they have no guiding policy.
Right, so the amendment is now before us, it was moved by Supervisor Mitchell, seconded by Supervisor Horvath, sorry, can't read my own writing. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Supervisors Mitchell, motion is before you. Supervisor Solis?
No.
Supervisor Solis, no. Supervisor Mitchell?
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Han?
No.
Supervisor Han, no. Motion fails to pass, two to two.
Okay, so Item 2A is received and filed, and Item 2B is before us, is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay, moved by Supervisor Solis, I'll second it. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Item 2B is before you. Supervisor, and 2A is received and filed. Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Mitchell?
No.
Supervisor Mitchell, no. Supervisor Horvath?
Yes.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Motion carries, three to one.
Okay, so now we're on Item 3, we'll hear from our CEO on Item 3.
Thank you Madam Chair. Agenda Item Number 3 is comprised of four reports back deferred to budget deliberations. I'll briefly go through the budget topics. Item 3A is a report from our Director of Beaches and Harbors and provides information regarding additional annual revenue from Marina leasehold extensions. This is an annual report and the additional revenue this year is $121,500. Item 3B is a report from my office regarding the affordable housing budget for fiscal year 2324. The report confirms that my office has identified $100 million for affordable housing programming and provides the recommendations for the allocation of that funding as developed by the Affordable Housing Coordinating Committee. Item 3C is a report back from my office on recommended position allocations and funding to implement the actions needed to address the local homelessness emergency. The report confirms that the final changes budget recommends 26 additional positions for the CEO Homeless Initiative to conduct a variety of homeless emergency implementation actions. The increase in positions is fully offset with the corresponding reduction in services and supplies appropriation. And finally, Item 3D is a report back from my office to review funding and staffing recommendations of the county's Illegal Dumping Task Force and provide recommendations on identifying a dedicated funding source for the purposes of combating illegal dumping and addressing environmental justice concerns. Our report indicates that more time is needed to quantify the departmental budget requests related to this matter. As a result, we plan to provide a budget recommendation on this matter during the supplemental budget phase in October. This concludes all of the items for Agenda Item 3. All four reports are received and filed and are now before you.
Okay, thank you. These reports are received and filed. Seeing no objections, that will be the order, there's no vote needed on that. Now we're going to go on to Item 4. Once again, our CEO.
Thank you Madam Chair. Agenda Item 4 is comprised of three recommendations in Items 4A, 4B and 4C. Item 4A is a recommendation to modify the appropriations limit resolution for fiscal years 2122 and 2223, and to approve the appropriations limit, also known as the GAN limit, and the appropriations subject to limit for the fiscal year 2324. Each year, my office calculates the county's appropriations limit and the board adopts a resolution to approve the limit. A change in state law required my office to recalculate the GAN limit for fiscal years 2122 and 2223. We now ask the board to adopt the corrected and modified limit as specified in the letter. We also seek approval of the appropriations limit for fiscal year 2324 as set forth in the letter. Item 4B is not needed. Item 4B is a recommendation that your board approved any revised figures to the final budget for fiscal year 2324. Since no changes were made to the final changes budget recommendations, this item is not needed. And then finally, Item 4C is a recommendation that your board approve eight miscellaneous items consisting of a series of delegated authority requests or instructions to departments that we seek each year to operationalize the budget. More specifically, Items 1, 2, 3, 4 and 8, seek authority to enter into and/or approve agreements on the terms set forth in this board agenda. Items 5 seeks approval of budgetary accounting policies. Item 6 delegates authority to my office to approve the transfers of appropriation as set forth in state budget law. And then finally, Item 7 seeks approval of temporary transfers of positions among departments based on a condition set forth above. This concludes all the items for Agenda Item 4. Since there were no adopted motions today impacting the amounts in the budget, Item 4B is unnecessary, as I indicated, so Items 4A and 4C are before you.
Okay, moved by Supervisor Horvath, seconded by Supervisor Solis. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Items 4A and 4B, I'm sorry, 4A and 4C are before you. Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Mitchell?
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Motion carries, four to zero.
Okay, now we're on Item 5, and we'll hear from, guess who? The CEO on Item 5. And Oscar Valdez, our interim auditor controller.
As our auditor controller is making its way up, this item is for the auditor controller to present fiscal year, the fiscal year 2324 budget resolution to your board. Our interim auditor controller, Oscar Valdez, is here to present the resolution.
Present away.
Good afternoon Madam Chair, members of the board. Oscar Valdez, interim auditor controller. On April 18th, your board approved the fiscal year 2324 recommended budget. This afternoon, we have made all of the necessary adjustments according to your approved amendments. So the fiscal year 2324 final budget is ready, balanced and ready for your consideration.
Great, well done. So Item 5 is before us, this is our budget resolution, and moved by Supervisor Solis. I'll- by Supervisor Solis. I'll second it. Executive Officer, please call the roll.
Item 5 is before you. Supervisor Solis?
Aye.
Supervisor Solis, aye. Supervisor Mitchell?
Aye.
Supervisor Mitchell, aye. Supervisor Horvath?
Aye.
Supervisor Horvath, aye. Supervisor Han?
Aye.
Supervisor Han, aye. Motion carries, four to zero.
Okay, great. Thank you, everybody. That does conclude our meeting today. Was trying to get us out before 6:00 PM. The next regular meeting of the board will be held tomorrow. You'll be all back here tomorrow, Tuesday, June 27th, 9:30 AM, and thank you. The meeting for the fiscal year 202324 budget deliberation is adjourned.